Have one introduction and then we'll get back into the Greeno Road. Buford, would you like to introduce our new staff member?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to introduce Hunter Simmons. He is our new planning and zoning manager. He's been with us one week and I have totally overwhelmed him with massive amounts of information.
There was information on the website looking at this before I came into town and then social media. And I think what you've just done is a great example of the way government should be ran. This meeting tonight and the public discussion is, it opens the door to this. So it was kind of disheartening to hear some of the, we're not even being included in the conversation. So to even go one step further and do this once more is exciting. And I'm excited to see all the other people here that are interested in this. I think we'll do some special things together. So thank you all for the opportunity. Buford, through these meetings, has been here over the weekends every time I talk to him. So Buford's put a lot together in a quick, short amount of time. So I hope we can see this to maturity.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. All right. The first item on the agenda is the Greeno Road overlay district. And I'd just like to say something before Buford gets the chair that he's going to present this, I hope, kind of quickly. And we'll take a few comments on it. We have decided to have a September 10th open meeting at the library, probably at the library, oh, here, excuse me, here, that will be an hour and a half meeting specifically for the public to get 100% of the public input before then we hopefully can make the final tweaks and have something at the October agenda to vote on. So in light of that, in light of that September 10th meeting, let's try to keep it to the point pretty quick today and move on to the rest of our discussion. All right, Buford?
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the introduction there. And so the Greeno Road corridor overlay, this is an amendment to the City of Fairhope zoning ordinance. And so therefore, you notice, it does have a case number because this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And as the chairman mentioned, we're not requesting consideration by the Planning Commission of this corridor overlay tonight. This is an opportunity for staff to present it again to the commission and to the public. And also to have, in lieu of a public hearing, we'll have a public participation, a period of time of public participation as allowed by the chairman. And so we'll begin by explaining, we have several slides on this. And what I'd like for our guests that are with us tonight to realize is that we pre-published, I've been talking a lot today, Commissioners, forgive me, we pre-published this slideshow about four weeks ago on the city's website. And we've enlarged some of the text. And what you'll notice here, we're trying something new for this Planning Commission meeting. This is just an experiment of trying to run dual screens so that way you have a second one that's a bit larger. You begin the slides here by going through a timeline. And you'll notice I mentioned the Corridor 98 Committee going all the way back to 1987. And going from 2011, when there was a North Greeno Road Committee, Chairman, Commissioners, I could not find any documents into the public record by that committee. We'll fast forward to December 22nd of 2016. That was when a first development moratorium came about. Then you'll notice October 23rd, a moratorium report was published describing some of the findings by staff during that moratorium. One of those findings was a recommendation that we create a Greeno Road corridor overlay. You'll notice here, in both the document online, the document here, the web addresses of these various meetings, whether they be agendas, minutes, or actual videos of the meetings are in the various slides. And so we've built that as a timeline. Someone who goes to the city website and downloads this will have ready access of the history of this endeavor. You'll notice we've also included on this next slide, we've included other references by other entities who mentioned it or described it. We also conducted a visual preference survey. We'll allude to that a bit later. And the various announcements of that visual preference survey are shown here. If you look at the bottom of this slide, November 26th of 2018, we discussed having, the city council work session discussed having a possible moratorium, development moratorium along Greeno Road to allow the results of the visual preference survey, the VPS, to be obtained and compiled. And you see the various web addresses where those are published. You notice the visual preference survey report was published in March of 2019, March of this year. Then you'll see where staff, Planning Commission, and City Council began taking various actions, going back to a retrospective about the old Corridor 98 that was published by staff in April. We began in May to advise the public that this is coming. And so we just simply had a not-for-action item on the May agenda. And so the various timeline brings us to where we are today. And every time it's been discussed at a mayor's roundtable, at the city council work sessions, or in this chamber before this Planning Commission are noted right here. From the comprehensive plan, notice this slide right here. Would you like to see Greeno Road developed commercially from Fairhope Avenue northwards Daphne? 70% no. This was from the comprehensive plan update from 2015. Do you think connected of your roads, sidewalks, trails, parks, and commercial property are positive? Overwhelmingly positive. Again, this was from the 2015 comprehensive plan. And I think very striking, are you concerned about what Greeno Road and State Highway 181 will look like in the future? Again, overwhelmingly yes. Again, you'll see how the comprehensive plan supports the endeavor we're discussing today. Chairman, Commissioners, there are several frequently asked questions. What I'll attempt to do here is just summarize. Number one, is the Greeno Road overlay a mass rezoning of properties along Greeno Road? Rezoning of any kind? No. This is an amendment to the City of Fairhope zoning ordinance, creating an overlay district. Currently, there are eight overlay districts. So what does the GRC do? It creates additional requirements and restrictions for properties located entirely or partially within 400 feet of the center line of Greeno Road on both the west and east side. We'll talk about landscape ordinance and other enhancements to the zoning ordinance in a future slide. Notice we clarify here, no provision of the GRC applies to properties zoned RA, R1, R2, or R3. This is addressing what about single-family residences? The underlying zoning within the GRC has not changed. Also, we'll talk about this in a future slide, Article VII nonconformities still remains. Go into a little bit detail here about parking, traffic, drainage, and buffering. And essentially, what this handles is that by implementing mandatory site plan review and plus the additional, the existing requirements of the subdivision regulations, as well as the landscape ordinance, addresses each of those items. We'll talk about light pollution here on a future slide. Also, does this reroute traffic on Greeno Road? No, because traffic impact studies are required for any development if they trigger it. Why is it 400 feet wide on either side? Well, the idea there is to capture the property necessary to create an area of influence along the corridor for which the GRC aids in managing the development pattern of Greeno Road. This was a staff-level decision to try to manage the area of influence without being too intrusive. But I'll just read this off. Final approval of the zoning ordinance is made by the city council. The review process begins with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the city council. That recommendation may be for approval, denial, approval with changes to the zoning ordinance as recommended by the Planning Commission. The city council may approve, approve with changes, deny, continue for further study, or send it back to the Planning Commission for additional study. So let's answer this question here. Why have I not received a letter in the mail about the GRC? This is procedural, but basically, Planning and zoning staff has not requested the Planning Commission act upon, take a vote on this document. So that is the trigger for that type of public notice. And as again, you say, that action is not requested at today's meeting. All right. So summarizing the frequently asked questions. First of all, when will I receive a letter in the mail about the GRC? Prior to the meeting at which the Planning Commission, a vote is requested, all property owners affected by the GRC will receive written notice in the mail. And I understand we're going to discuss that later on in the meeting, about a possible future meeting. So in a nutshell, what does the GRC restrict? Drive-through lanes, except in the Southern Edge District to an extent, backlit or illuminated plastic signs, neon signs, video boards, blank featureless walls, flat roofs without parapets or cornices, unscreened rooftop equipment, certain uses. In a nutshell, what does the GRC require or encourage? Encourage. Enhanced landscaping. We'll show you the illustrations. A build-to line, parking in the rear of buildings, mandatory site plan review, mandatory landscape review, and requires foresighted architecture encourages retrofit of older shopping centers. Chairman, Commissioners, this slide, this is a direct excerpt from the document, just to reiterate the location and also to clarify the properties that are not within, that the properties that are not within the city limits, that would fall within the GRC, are not included in the GRC unless they come within the city limits, are annexed into the city. Also, to clarify, a piece of property is crossed by the 400-foot line, that entire property would be in the GRC. So the districts. And you'll notice the inset map, the same map, of course, is in the lobby, has been in the lobby of the, has been in the lobby of City Hall for about two weeks. This same map is also in the lobby of Public Works Building. You have the Northern Edge District, North Village Center around Parker Road, the Gateway District, Fairhope Avenue Village Center, and the Southern Edge District. So requirements for all districts, again, as we described previously, this is from the applicability section of the document. What I want to emphasize here, provided however, this section shall not apply to properties zoned RA, R1, R2, or R3. Doesn't apply to the single-family properties. Does apply to new construction, demolition, Class III renovations, sidewalks, uses, private improvements, and landscape alterations. Want to also emphasize, nonconforming uses, structures, lots, and other nonconformities can still be governed by Article VII nonconformities. That part of the zoning ordinance is not changed. Also, we'll talk about this as well, is that the same process for requesting variances or appeals to the Board of Adjustments, that is retained, that is not changed, would apply in the GRC as it would in any other part of the city that is zoned. Again, the use is allowable when the underlying zoning district is applicable to a particular property, and the GRC shall continue to apply, subject to the provisions of the GRC. The use table is retained. We did not change the use table. After carefully revising the document, the use table remains the same. So that way, we mirror how the zoning, how the overlay districts work in the other overlay districts work the same as this one. You have the underlying zoning, as shown in Table 3-1. The overlay district has additional requirements or additional allowances. This works the same way as the other overlay districts. And this is just a summary of some of the other things that apply to all of the districts. We talked about the signage issues at the top. We talked about the blank featureless walls. The glazing requirements, that is borrowed from an existing portion of the zoning ordinance as noted right there in the orange balloons. The roof pitches, that is borrowed from another portion of the zoning ordinance, not reinventing the wheel, using the same requirements from other parts of the zoning ordinance. You'll note here the mandatory site plan review and landscape plan requirements mandatory for the GRC. So the districts themselves, the Northern Edge District, notice, you'll notice both the profile and the plan view, this contemplates the requirement for an edge, is talked about in the comprehensive plan. So the snapshot of the uses, either allowed or modified by this district, are at the bottom of the page. And you see the requirements on hotels, bed and breakfasts, prohibiting ice machines, ATMs, car washes. What, in general, that prohibition is in all the GRC. So you'll see that on each of those. Drive-throughs are prohibited in this. And then you notice the automobile service stations and convenience stores, those types of things are allowed. We have some new requirements we'll describe in just a moment. Now, the North Village Center, this is around Parker Road near the existing public store. Very similar, but you notice here, we have a wider sidewalk, a more narrow landscape buffer, and then you see the edge of right-of-way and the build-to line. And then here, very similarly, but you notice right here that quick-serve restaurants are prohibited use, which are restaurants with no table service, or takeout only, pickup meals only, food trucks would be prohibited here. You'll notice the prohibitions on automobile repair and convenience stores. Just a quick note from the comprehensive plan, that basically just describes where the North Village Center comes from and where we got that terminology, that this is right out of the comprehensive plan. So we noted it right here, that's directly from the comprehensive plan. Now, we're going to throw some quick excerpts from the visual preference survey in here. So for example, question 21, would you like to see this type of development happen in a Village Center? And so this is from the visual preference survey. As you can tell, it was a pretty overwhelming yes answer, almost 87%. Would you like to see this type of development in the Village Center? And this is, this was taken locally. And so as you can see, overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, the answer was no, almost 90%. So the Gateway District, you have a more narrow sidewalk on property adjacent to the building, a wider landscape buffer, it widens out, widens out. Now, terminology-wise, this is strictly a name that we call the district. This is not attempting to create some type of brand, Commissioners. This is just simply the name for this type of district. So we certainly understand some comments about that. The wider landscape, or the wider landscape buffer to make it attractive. So again, the drive-throughs will be prohibited, the ice machines, we talked about quite a bit, the quick-serve restaurants, the automobile repair and convenience stores. You notice the square footage requirements on ground floors and on groceries. The bed and breakfast is a bit smaller in this one. The two-family and townhouses, where those things are zoned for that would be two stories. Let me show you, let me show you on the next slide, how we would review a proposed development. This is a development that has not been built, but pretend this follows along the east side of Greeno Road. So if you can tell by the orange balloons, the landscape buffer for this particular proposed development was 40 feet wide. It would reduce to 20 feet wide in the Gateway District. Parking would be removed to the rear. You would have a build-to line behind the on-property sidewalk for the structures. If the buildings and the lot, if the buildings were small enough and the lot was large enough that you did have some incidental parking that went onto the sides of the building, it would still be buffered by the perimeter landscaping requirements of the landscape ordinance. And so another question from the visual preference survey, would you provide this type of development along Greeno Road or Highway 181? Notice how wide the landscape buffer is here. Now, the sidewalks are a bit wider in this particular photo, but do you prefer this along Greeno Road? And again, a very positive response of more than 80% on that particular photo. So the Village District, this would be the Fairhope Avenue Village District. This mirrors that of the North Village District. Same requirements, same requirements, same drawing. And then finally, the Southern Edge District, this is where the single drive-through lanes are allowable at the rear of the principal structure. Enhanced drive-through standards have been added to the zoning ordinance, we'll talk about that later. Again, the restrictions on the ice machines and the ATMs, similar requirements, you notice the bed and breakfast can be 12 rooms, the convenience stores, automobile repairs. We have a section added to the zoning ordinance, we'll describe in just a moment. These are allowable uses, but we've added some requirements to the zoning ordinance to address those. So some closing remarks. You'll notice this page here is right out of the comprehensive plan, so I just want to read something from you. If you'll notice, teasing our mobile neighbors about Airport Boulevard, "Commercial land uses along Greeno Road are likely to depend on high-traffic counts and are likely to mimic the uses seen on other major corridors throughout South Alabama. Since the citizens desire that Greeno Road not turn into another bad example of strip development, Fairhope must continue to develop and utilize its strict sign ordinance and landscaping requirements." Understood. "Consider the creation of design guidelines for commercial development along Greeno Road that addresses items such as parking placement on-site, build-to lines, drive-through locations, screening, et cetera, et cetera." This is that process, a further implementation of the comprehensive plan. So Commissioners, just so you're aware, flip through this, flip through here, service stations, convenience stores, car washes, automobile repair, these are enhancements to the zoning ordinance. This would apply wherever these uses occur, not just in the GRC. This is something we at staff believe is a necessary modernization of the zoning ordinance. So we'll go back to the visual preference survey. Would you like, what do you like about the image below? Pick one. More than 90% said none of the above. This again, from the visual preference survey. As an alternative, I found this location in Auburn, Alabama. This is on Opelika Road. You'll notice that following their zoning code, you have the fuel pumps in the rear of the building. And here's another view of the same location. So as a routine edit to the subdivision, the zoning ordinance, this is a recommendation to add some additional requirements for convenience stores, automobile, automobile repair facilities, car washes. This is an abbreviated text in the slide. You've got the full text in your packet, and the full text is available from downloading the agenda. In addition, this slide, Commissioners, is like we talked about during the work session, this is a routine housekeeping revision, clarifying accessory structures and accessory dwellings. This is a brand-new section to the zoning ordinance governing drive-through lanes and windows, both inside and outside the GRC. In the GRC, they're only permissible in the Southern Edge District, but would be permissible in all other areas outside the GRC where zoning allows. This gives some requirements for location, stacking lanes, that sort of technical requirement that's not in the zoning ordinance now. Also, one of Mr. Peterson's questions from earlier today was, what, how many questions I'd received from citizens? One that I did hear a couple times, what about lighting? And so we realized that the lighting section of the zoning ordinance did need to be modernized. You'll see the paragraph at the upper right is what is currently in the zoning ordinance. So we modeled this after Walton County, Florida, which is more extensive and actually gives you a standard to apply. And so this is an excerpt from that new lighting section. And then from a housekeeping standpoint, there are some definitions we needed to add to the zoning ordinance, such as the definition of a car wash or heavy equipment. These are routine edits, but this would be an opportune time to have that. So concluding, Commissioners, I just want to read this to you here, and I found the cover of the Corridor 98 Committee from 1987. "The GRC is a continuing implementation of the comprehensive plan as well as response to the requests of Fairhope citizens expressed in the visual preference survey." We harped on that quite a bit. "The GRC is the first step in possibly introducing a form-based zoning code to the City of Fairhope." Special thanks to Mike Jeffries, prepared the zoning maps that you've seen with the corridor overlay. He had to edit that many times. Jessica Walker and Paige Crawford for the Facebook postings. Emily for what she's about to do, because she's about to send out over 600 letters. And also, special thanks to Joe Leett for keeping these meetings running. And as we mentioned earlier, we wanted to welcome Hunter Simmons to the City of Fairhope. Commissioners, before we go into a period of public participation, I'm happy to answer questions of staff.
Just FYI, that Corridor 98 was set up by John Parker and Barry Booth and Rose Funds independently to plant the trees along Greeno Road that you see now in front of the hospital and up and down the road. They ask each person for $200 donation to plant trees. Are there any questions at this time?
Your mic, or my mic?
It is, but I'm talking quietly, sorry. Any questions for staff, for the staff at this time? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I would like to thank the staff for the work they put into this. And it's a tremendous job, and it's hard work, and of course, you never get any thanks, you mostly get criticisms, and that's just part of what we do. But anyway, I appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with that totally. All right, at this time, this is not actually a public hearing, but this is public participation, so we'll let a few people speak. But remember, we will have an October 10th meeting, at which time we'll get into this very detailed, so, excuse me, September. This will be voted on in the October meeting. We'll have a September 10th meeting that we'll get into this in detail. But I have Larry Staschel's name listed here. Larry, if you don't mind mentioning your address so that Emily can get you on our record, In the front, the front one up here, I'm not sure if that one's on back there.
Larry Staschel, 60, North Eagle Side. Firstly, pretty obvious from what we've heard so far, the staff and the commission have put a lot of time and effort into developing this, whatever you, GRC thing. What stands out to be is I want to commend you all for recognizing something we have known for over 50 years, and that's Greeno is not a residential street. And that's something that's long past being addressed by the City of Fairhope. But with all those good words, I cannot help be appalled that we get to this point. It is obvious, we're way beyond first and second base, we're around the third heading for home on this project. Absolutely no engagement of the property owners along Greeno. I cannot see how this commission can even be at its point that it is today. And you have never engaged the property owners along Greeno. Thank Mr. Dias for raising some aspect of that during the discussions to encourage you all to have some kind of a session where maybe the property owners get a chance to have input. Tremendous amount of credit has obviously been given to this visual preference survey. Not a single time have you asked for a property owner's preference. I guess you just don't care. But we care. We've owned these properties for years, and we diligently paid taxes for years. And to an extent, I feel like you're telling us we are a bunch of fools, is that we haven't There's been no rush to develop, because my dad always taught me, the city will treat you fair. No need to be in a rush. We should have put our hamburger joints up a long time ago. And that is, it's beyond my understanding of how you all can play that game. We want to be good citizens. We don't care for Greeno to look like Airport Boulevard either. But we think we should have some right to involvement in the process of discussing, what are we going to do with Greeno? But be that as it may, I would encourage, challenge, whatever the right word would be, that you all not take action on this plan until such time as you sit down with the property owners and at least listen to our thoughts. You want to ignore them, fine, but there is some concept of process or due process here. And at this stage of the game, we can only view what you're trying to do as a discriminatory taking of our property. Now, I'm not, I'm not here to do anything other than beseech you all to let us have a chance to be in the process.
Larry, do you know where this came from?
Where, what came from?
Where this GRC, the push to get this done, came from?
From all my understandings and hearing, this goes back, back into the 80s.
You know, I've been pushing this to get this done, because I feel like it's unfinished business before my swan song on this board. And I've listened to you speak in that microphone about three or four times about your feelings on Greeno Road. And a lot of this in here comes from you and what you've said, what Debra Green has said she's wanted, what I've heard people up and down Greeno Road say in that microphone right there over the years. This visual preference survey, over 400 citizens in three different meetings, 1,200 citizens in all, voted on this visual preference survey. I assume some of them, some of them probably lived on Greeno, but they're ones that are as affected by this as you are, driving by, looking at it, and being there. And we're not taking anything away from you on this. We are adding to this.
How can you possibly say that when there is a list of prohibited uses? Could not even put a bank on my property because you can't have a drive-up. Now, come on now, this is a taking. I don't care how you call it.
And how is your, how is your land zoned right now?
My land is currently zoned residential, because the City of Fairhope has been bullheaded about.
So you can't put a bank on it now, so we're not taking anything from you? We're giving more rights.
All I've got to do is go for a rezoning. Haven't done it, because we haven't been in a rush to develop. You all are forcing us to do something. Those trees aren't permanent. The way y'all are handling it, that's going to go away. Because you're asking us to donate a park to the City of Fairhope. If you want a parkway and the citizens that issue that visual reference preference survey want a park, that's fine. Do like you did with the triangle. Buy it. Don't confiscate it.
So you don't think you should have any buffer of green space between you and Greeno?
Never came out of my mind. Never came out of my mouth, sir. I said, let us have input.
Well, then, come to the September 10th meeting and have input.
It is, from all indications, you all are, have a done deal sitting in front of you. Why have you not, prior to now, engaged the property owners?
Where were you the last meeting?
Answer me that one.
Where, where were you the last meeting?
Don't know about it. How are we supposed to know about it?
We had a last meeting that, and we had, this is the second work session we had.
And how many times have you notified us?
This has been on the city website every single time.
So I'm supposed to, every morning when I get up, check to see whether you put your drawers on?
Every month, you probably ought to check and see if you're interested in what's going on in the city.
No, sir. If you're going to try to take my property, you have an obligation to at least give me input.
Well, I don't see that we're taking. I see that you're getting. But if that's your feeling, that's fine. But please come to the September 10th and give input. You can attack the process and you can, you know, be skeptical, or you can come in and you can put some input in and try to make this better. But I'm tired of people.
You're telling me that there will be no opportunity for property owners to input?
Just attack the process and this will go away again, just like it did. No, I'm saying September 10th, that's when we're opening this up, just like now. Right now, you haven't told us much of what you want to do differently.
Isn't this just pretty obvious? Y'all have already got your minds made up?
I don't. There are a number of things I think changed, one of which I saw the 10-foot buffer changing from 40. I think we ought to have a minimum of 20. There are quite a few things that I think ought to be changed.
And who's going to pay for those extra foots that you're taking that are just kind of casually being mentioned?
Right now, the requirement's 40. But anyway, come to the meeting September 10th and whatever changes you feel like ought to be made, bring them up.
So, I basically could leave here tonight with the feeling that I came in, that y'all have already done your deal and we're just wasting our time.
Well, you can feel it however you want, but I don't agree with it, because I think there are going to be quite a few changes. I know down here at the far right has a whole list of changes he thinks should be made. I've got quite a few things that I don't agree with, with it. And this is the first time that we've seen this document. And if you're looking at prohibitive list, that's even dropped from this document as well, the prohibitive list. There are a few items.
See, that's, that's why I'm asking for some opportunity for property owners to get with you all and staff. We don't know what's here, because this just blew up on us overnight.
Well, you can have this in September 10th. Come with your input, please. Please, I mean, I'm interested in it. But I've heard you in that microphone numerous times, and a lot of this comes from things I've heard people like you say and, and, and others. We're trying to rectify this. That's our whole process, that we're trying to rectify, you know, rectify our wrong for 30 years. So, you know, I apologize for trying to do what you've been wanting us to do. I mean, I don't think you're going to get everything you want, but I think that there will be a lot of stuff in there that you really like and really appreciate. But if you want to take this or get one from Emily and look at it, send Buford to me emails of changes he thinks need to be made. That's how we're going.
Will staff return my calls?
I imagine so. They return mine and they'll return the emails.
They haven't yet.
I had received a phone number for you, and it was, I called and it was not you. I asked for Mr. Larry Staschel and they said I had the wrong number.
Well, I can't help but you had.
Well, let's move on, but we've got the September 10th meeting and any input you have, we'd love to hear, Mr. Staschel.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while our next, while our next speaker approaches, I just want to clarify very quickly.
Bobby, you're the next, Bobby Green, you're the next speaker. Yes, sir.
So, commissioners and to our audience, just clarify, final approval of this document will be by the city council.
That's correct.
So, we go through the process with the planning commission. The planning commission does not approve or deny the document. They make a recommendation, as we talked about on one of the slides. Final approval goes to the city council, so it goes through yet another public notice process. There will be another opportunity to address this with the city council.
That is totally correct. Yes, sir, Bobby?
Okay. I'm going to try and be brief, because, do you have a pretty good list of people who are going to speak?
We just have you and Deborah listed, and really, I like to move forward to the other eyes on the.
I think there's other folks here who maybe would like to speak.
And that's fine, but because we're adding another meeting, September 10th.
Sure.
Yeah, I like to move through it pretty quickly.
The whole basis of this, as I understand it, from Mr. Buford and Mr. Staschel reiterating it, was the visual preference survey. Now, where in all of this visual preference survey does it recommend, recommend limiting land uses? Is there an answer to that?
It does not. I mean, if you have an input, you know, to tell us, you know, my feeling is this should be more form-oriented. And if you notice, that first sheet you got of the limited land uses has pretty much been dropped, hasn't it, Buford? With the exception of car washes and two or three other levels.
Car washes, convenience stores, businesses with drive-throughs, restaurants with drive-throughs.
Drive-throughs in the front.
Right. So, each, each restriction or allowance is then, is on a district-by-district basis. And so, this mirrors the other overlay districts in that you go by the underlying zoning. And then, once you look at the underlying zoning, the allowable uses in the underlying zoning, then you cross-reference to the overlay for the additional requirements.
Bobby, what we're trying to do here is. With respect, that's parsing words, because how do you have an automobile-oriented highway and to better the automobile uses of the highway, you eliminate drive-throughs? That's beyond reality. And so, yes, you can have a bank on a major highway, but the bank doesn't have a drive-through. Or if it's allowed in a certain section of the driveway, it has one drive-through. I would really like to go to a bank that has a single drive-through. There's, there's just all kinds of problems with this when you get down in, into the weeds of it, into the details of it. And one thing I don't think anybody's spoken to is probably an unintended consequence of this. Parallel to Greeno Road is Highway 13 and 181. And there are sections of Fairhope Avenue and Greeno Road very close to, I mean, Fairhope Avenue and Morphe Avenue, they're very close to Greeno Road and Gayfer, that are not in the city limits. Out Gayfer, you only have to go a couple hundred feet. You're out in the county. The unintended consequence of this will probably be a rush to build all of the things you're declaring undesirable in the road to chaos and placing them all up and down Highway 13 and all up and down 181, because nothing will be allowed that could be done nicely under current regulations on Greeno Road. So, what everybody will do is commercialize those other corridors, because you are disincentive, making a disincentive for anybody in the county east or south of Fairhope to come into the city limits. You have wonderful businesses south of town or currently not in the, in the city limits who have stated to me that they won't be allowed to continue in business if they are, come under the owner's rules and regulations of this farm-oriented businesses, for instance, garden centers and such, who are currently outside, but would have to come in should a 300-lot subdivision be approved to the, next to them. And those folks want to come in, the votes will become 300 to 2 and instantly. Anything that they want to do, whether they want to put in a, or pave a possible handicap parking space or remove a tree on their property, would trigger a formal site plan review, going through the planning department and up to you guys, and then through the city council. The removal of a tree, the paving of one parking space.
So, do you want us to scrap this?
No, I don't, I don't think you should scrap the whole thing. Why don't you go back to this visual preference survey that says nothing about uses? I, I like the lighting idea. I like the, the idea of the parking in the rear. I like some of the buffering, though it's way too heavy in some places where you already have a 200-foot right-of-way and live oak trees whose branches are touching the ground. It's, it's a, it's a taking in many cases. It is a taking. I think it will be viewed by courts, if it comes to that, as a taking. Mr. Watson maybe could speak to that. But, but let me just close with, if somebody would, and I'd really like an answer to this, if somebody can. In the last seven years, on our section of Greeno Road, or, or let's say from Fairhope Avenue North, what have we had that's an undesirable development? Has there been one undesirable development on the northern portion of Greeno Road in the last seven years under current statutes and regulations? Has there been one? There have been several, maybe a dozen, that are very nice. I, I challenge you to give me one that would be the road to chaos.
Bobby, I'll say this. If you'd like us to drop it, let us know. If you'd like to put your input, we like your input. I don't want to pick out individual or hurt any feelings of anybody, but if you look at the north area, most of that area has been residential, and most of those properties have been developed, have come in underneath puts. And there's one that I don't particularly care for. You know, I won't go into banks. I think we've got quite a few banks. And we'll have a number of vacant bank buildings at one time, but that's not our business. The reason of the drive-throughs is drive-throughs take a lot of asphalt. And when you look at Airport Boulevard, what you're trying to protect against is asphalt and you're trying to have buffering. And if people want to have no buffering and they want to have tons of asphalt and tons of drive-throughs, it's probably not going to work. And people who live on Greeno are probably not going to get every single thing they want. Because it's not just the people on Greeno, it's the people that drive through there every day and have to look at it and don't want it to look like Airport Boulevard also. So, anything you can come up with to prevent it from looking like Airport Boulevard, but still have the folks on Greeno Road happy, but have it be attractive, I, I'm frankly could care less about the businesses or what type of businesses are in there.
Exactly.
And we dropped a lot of that, because I think it's more form-oriented, that we're more concerned about what it looks like from the front than what's actually in there business-wise or whether somebody wants to live there or not. And if you noticed, Buford took that to note. And if you noticed when, you know, we had, how many pages was it of possible uses and probable and maybe and, and Zetas and Zetas and every Greek letter there was?
Appreciate that, because originally, that one column, the only thing that could be built was a public utility.
And, and we've been, unlike what Mr. Staschel says, we've been listening to the public. And that's one reason that all of that came out. And we're still listening to the public and, and we've got the September 10th meeting. And please don't attack us about the process. Please bring what you want us to do and what you want us to change. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. Maybe after we make a recommendation to the city council, maybe they will, maybe they won't.
Well, please, please, with respect, go over this with a comb, because you just mentioned asphalt parking. The requirements of this change where folks have gravel parking, if, if they, if they come under the requirements of this, it allows, it dictates curbing and, and pavement throughout. Where it exists gravel, there's no more permeable surface than a gravel. But this would dictate, the gravel goes away and you have asphalt or concrete or permeable pavement, which becomes impermeable over time.
Again, whatever changes you think need to be made, please send them to Buford an email, come to the September 10th meeting and make those changes.
Finally, Mr. Dias, I really appreciate your input at the, earlier about, because the folks that I've spoken to who own property up and down Greeno Road, without exception, they were either totally unaware or they did not know where to go to get information. So, appreciate that.
Thank you, Bobby. Deborah?
I will try to make this, this quick. Mr. Dias, thank you for your comments and, and your insight. Mr. Turner, I promise you, I will not lose my religion this time. I come in peace. I, I kind of have to agree with everything that Mr. Staschel said. I have to agree with everything my husband said. Couple things, I do have two emails here from Mr. King. One of them says that he did finally consult legal and that all the property owners along Greeno Road do have to be notified, all of them. And that was supposed to be done by August 5th. Now, I don't know where August 5th came from, but they should have been notified before the first public hearing and before this work session and before the other work session. I also have an email from Mr. King that says he will send me an email advising when any postings to the city website related to the Greeno Road corridor are live and available for viewing. Because I begged him, because the visual preference survey was on the city's website, to put this on the city's website. Now, I haven't seen it on Facebook. I'm with Mr. Dias. I don't do social media. I don't. I, I just don't. So, anyway, I've yet to see it on the city's website and I have yet to know. I know he said that Emily's going to be sending out 600 letters. There's, is that all? 600 letters for six and a half miles worth of property owners?
And I'll address that in a moment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Emily, can, can, may I ask that these be made part of the record? Sir, please.
Sir.
Okay, thank you. As far as the visual preference survey goes and as, as far as this Greeno Road corridor being based on the visual preference survey, this is a tool used, and it's not just used in city planning. It was created by a very evil person, look him up, I won't go into that, where it is a manipulative tool to get you to fall into what somebody wants you to like. And basically, it's akin to putting up a bowl of ice cream versus a bowl of Brussels sprouts and saying, okay, kid, what do you want for dinner? Brussels sprouts or ice cream? So, you've got the good and the bad, you know, for a kid. And that is what this visual preference survey pretty much did. It, it, it is a manipulative tool to suggest what you like. You like the good? You like the pretty? Or you like the yucky, the ugly? Also, it was based on information fed to the company that did the visual preference survey by people that are city leaders, elected officials, and people that work for the city. And you can go back and you can view work sessions, you can view roundtable sessions, and you hear things like, we want to attract the kind of developers to build the type of developments. We want to attract the type of people we want. So, I mean, you may not find all those words in the same sentence, but you find those words and those phrases when you talk about this visual preference survey and what is going on with Fairhope. And are we trying to run off people that have lived along, lived in Fairhope forever, particularly along Greeno Road, that have been good stewards of this community? Emily, we could have, the day after you guys rezoned us to B2, taken a whole bunch of cash and walked. We didn't and we should have at this point. And we have also found out a whole bunch more stuff that the city was going to do to us. Thank you, Mr. King and the mayor and a few other people, and I'll let somebody else handle that. But excuse my attitude right now, I'm, I'm trying not to have one. But this is all unfair. And Mr. King also talked about this 2007 Greeno Road Corridor Committee. Buford, this was us. This was the people that lived on Greeno Road, and you'll find that probably in the dump somewhere, because no, nobody would pay attention to us. We tried to get the city to come together with us to help us develop one contiguous plan along Greeno Road to where everything looked and meshed and, you know, pleased people, just so the city wouldn't suppress us anymore. And that never worked out. And the whole concept of the corridor was to have, afterwards, was to have live oaks planted, and this was per John Parker. Nobody really cared what was behind the landscaping, as long as it looked good when you drove down it. My husband was right. And we will put some things in writing to you guys about gravel going away. Everything has to be either paved or permeable pavers. All the curbs have to be rounded curbs or, or curbs, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the proper terminology. But this is just a matter of, of, of even a fascist sort of thing, where you tell people what kind of businesses they can have, what kind of businesses they can't have. And for the six and a half miles, you've made about 75% of the, the businesses non-conforming with all these new rules and regulations. You want to retrofit shopping centers. Where's the incentive? Where's the incentive for them to move their buildings to the front and parking to the back? Where is it? There is none. Zero, none, nada. So, what do you do, you landscaping? You put up buffers. You don't tell people what kind of business they can be in. You don't tell people that you are not rezoning their property, when indeed you are, by restricting what they can do under their current zoning, that is rezoning. That's the definition of rezoning. And we appreciate the work the city's trying to do, but with these increased buffers, I don't think the city realizes that you have got to pay people for this.
Deborah, most of the buffers on, on B2 like y'all have. Debra, most of the buffers on, on B2, like y'all have,
On, on Greeno Road, all along Greeno Road, and this was done because of the diocese.
He's requesting 40 to 20, and 40 to 10. So he's actually, Buford has them. I disagree with it, but he's got them getting smaller in the business areas. And a lot of this is addressing residential areas, where people will be able to come in under commercial zoning.
Yeah, but, but you've got those buffers, and you, you increase them and you decrease them all along the different segments of Greeno Road. And the only reason they're divided into these segments is because otherwise, you would have to make everything equal, like, you know, drive-throughs, and banks with drive-throughs, and restaurants, and everything else, from, from one segment to the other. So what you've done is you've limited, 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 limited. And what you've also done is
Debra, that's the nature of zoning. My family's 70 acres of wetlands, a point clear.
Lee, I can't, Lee, my, my heart bleeds for you.
I love that there's an apartment there.
It, it, it
But it's not going to happen. We have zoning rules, and
You have zoning rules that you guys make, but you take from other people. But again, what, what are we trying to do? Are we trying to suppress and punish the people that live here and have been good stewards? And nobody has made a bad development on Greeno Road, not that I know of. And to call this the gate, to, the, the area that has the most stringent restrictions, you, you drive north to south, and what do you see after you pass 104? You've got an unpretentious church, which is very much a compliment. You've got a home that is all boarded up. On the other side of the street, you have a stadium, you have the city's rec center with a sign that, you know, at least the city could, could set an example by changing the sign. And then you go down a little farther, you have a trailer park, and then you have Seaman Capital's property, you have a 25-year-old crime-infested apartment complex, and then you have a plant nursery, and then you have Gayfer. And that's where your, your greatest restrictions are? Because it's been so well-developed? No. You've got two PUDs there, but if they want to make any changes to them, they fall under the offices of the overlay district. Now, neither of those PUDs have parking in the rear. So it's just, I know, I'm going, Lee, and I
You've thrown in this about five times over. Again, if you want us to drop it, just tell us to drop it.
Drop it. Drop it. Drop it. Drop it. That's the best thing. If you want to landscape, and if you want to request parking be in the rear and buildings be to the front, that's fine. But I mean, the double sidewalks, the buffers, it, it just makes absolutely no sense. And you're taking property from people.
All of those PUDs are exactly what, exactly what have the buffering that, that has been required, and that's why they're attractive-looking, and that's why the developments on Greeno Road look decent, is because the requirements that the city of Fairhope has with the landscape requirements.
And so what you're saying is, the rest of us that live along Greeno Road aren't intelligent or care enough about Fairhope to do the same thing?
Now, why don't we just quit, guys? Let's go home.
That works. That's what the county, that's what the county did.
Let's just quit. Everybody do what they want. It'd be great if we want it.
Lee, this isn't personal to you, okay?
Let's just go home.
It's what the city is doing.
Let me put an apartment on my property down there, I'm clear.
Mr. Dias, I have not said you one time, have I?
Let's do high rises in downtown. Let's put a
I have not said you, people, one time.
Let's put condos on the basement.
I've said city. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
And, and that would be my only apology for losing my religion last time.
I understand.
So
I would say, we've, we've got zoning, and zoning has requirements, and, and the requirements should have helped
But the requirements aren't there now, and you guys are responsible as emissaries of the city.
Most of these requirements are there. The buffer's there, the landscape's there. On all, we're giving this to the residential, Debra.
Sorry, sorry. You are doing everybody that has owned property forever and ever and ever. You're kicking them in the rear because of those comments of, "We want to develop, we want to attract developers to build the type of developments. We want," almost just banging, "to attract the people that we want."
I've never said that. I've said, "We want"
No, I said, "Go back and look at those videos."
"We want Greeno Road to look attractive when you drive down it, not to look like Airport Boulevard."
Yes, and what you want to do, what, what the city of Fairhope wants to do, and what is it called? Genderfication? They want to get rid of the undesirables and bringing the people with money. And, and that's basically what it is. It, it is horrible discrimination. Horrible. And, and not only that, you're kicking people that have lived here their whole lives, their whole families have lived here their whole lives, going back generations. That's what you're, that's what the city of Fairhope is doing with this overlay district, and particularly by not notifying people, which Mr. King said, legal, he finally consulted legal on something, said legal, said they had to do. And not only that, this has to be advertised, the whole ordinance. So, you know, I, I, I would rather everything have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed before it gets to the city council. And if there are no i's to cross, I mean, no i's to dot, no t's to cross, that's even better, because that means it's gone. So I, I believe in landscaping. I don't believe in screwing things up. But afterward, again, what we found out, which I will let someone else deal with, I, I'm just wondering, well, I best hush. But having this meeting in September and notifying the property owners, that is the best thing you could do. So we'll just kind of go from there. And this is not personal to you, Mr. Turner, not at all.
Well, I understand, but you have to understand that not everybody gets everything they want in zoning. Not everybody gets what they want in cities.
Yeah, but unfortunately, there are certain people who are continually and intentionally targeted. I mean, you know, let, let's go back to, you know, the widening of Greeno Road, and, and us being sued over that, and our business access over the median. And, I mean, God, it just never ends for us.
We're going to have a beer at McCherry's afterwards, and I'll go over all my aches and pains through the years with the city, and you can go over yours, and, but this is not the place for that.
Well, I know. I know. We'll see, well, even, even the Fairhope Single Tax Colony had something to do with that.
We are trying our best to rectify the wrongs of the past.
I know that. Listen to the people that own the property and live here, and built this town, and whose bloodstains still adorn this town by building it. So that's who comes first.
I agree.
Thank you.
My great-grandparents are 50 yards that way, and I agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, while we wait for our next speaker, if we have one, can I, may I address something?
Yes, sir, please do.
So
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just need to clarify something.
Buford, hey, y'all can leave if you're going to argue, please. Buford, do you want to take the microphone?
Sure.
Hey, if y'all are going to fight, please take it outside.
The officer took care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So Chairman Commissioners, let's clarify procedure. Let's, let's underscore and clarify procedure once again. I want to be very clear about this. We are not requesting action by the Planning Commission today. So as a result, the trigger for the notifications was not met. Now, had staff requested the Planning Commission act upon this endeavor, this amendment to the zoning ordinance, then that written notification, those letters would have gone, gone out. So had that occurred, that would have gone out. And so whatever email I might have sent addressing that is correct, but that has not occurred today, based upon the results of the meeting we had in July. So procedurally, we don't have a meeting that requires that notice. The meeting that we're talking about having in September, will. So procedurally, I just wanted to clarify that. And I apologize if I didn't clarify that clearly enough on the first three or four slides.
And can you also clarify how this is actually giving more rights and more abilities to people to develop their property in that area?
Well, and, and Chairman, I think you said it best earlier, and, and a specific example is, currently, we have a landscape ordinance, ordinance number 1444. In addition to, it's identified what we, what we know as Greeno Road is US Highway 98, requires a 20-foot-wide landscape buffer, in addition on, and that is also enforced on other streets and roads in Fairhope. And so the GRC proposes actually narrowing that landscape buffer in certain areas, in certain areas. So that's a very specific requirement.
Because there's currently a 20-foot buffer right now.
It's currently a 20-foot buffer. If you look at the new smart bank under construction, there is going to be a 20-foot landscape buffer on the private property above and beyond the existing right-of-way, which is also landscape, because that's what the ordinance requires. And it's our duty as staff to enforce the ordinance.
And as far as the takings goes, we allow, we require downtown sidewalks now to be seven feet, which is two feet on private property.
Eight feet.
Eight feet, so that's three feet on private property.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, we all give into this. The wetlands land that my family owns can't be subdivided and developed. That can be considered a takings, and it shouldn't be. I'm not saying it should be. I'm just saying that everybody's affected by zoning requirements, pro and con. When it's your property, you want no zoning requirements at all. When it's your next-door neighbor's property, you want a nice little buffer so you don't have to look at the garbage cans. And that's just the nature of, of human beings, and we try to meet some type of a balance here. And here, what we're trying to do with this is meet a balance that people can have growth on Greeno Road from a commercial standpoint, but that we don't look like Airport Boulevard and everywhere else USA. And that's all we're trying to do. You can attack the process, you can talk about what people did 30 years ago, you can go spit on my granddad's grave, he was on this thing 30 years ago. I don't remember what happened back then, but that stuff's in the past. And what we're trying to do now is rectify the situation now, and any positive input, we would love to hear. Attacking the process, even though it's fun and sounds good, really doesn't do much.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have one more very brief comment, and I promise I'll sit down. But I want to say this publicly. Mayor Wilson, nor any member of the city council, nor any member of this commission, has told me, ordered me, or instructed me, or any member of staff, how to write this. I just want to be very clear on that. Now, we synthesize the information we receive. As you see, there have been edits and revisions based upon prior meetings, but we've not been ordered how to write this. This is staff's document synthesizing what we've heard from the various inputs. So I just wanted to make that very clear, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate that. And I like to say, on the 20 years that I've been on here, I've never had any of the three mayors tell me how to vote on anything, suggest I vote, or any of the three mayors have any meetings behind the scenes of all this conspiracy theory that was going on. Maybe I was just left out of it and didn't know about it. But I've always been told by all three of the mayors, including Mayor Wilson now, do what I think's best and vote my conscience. And that's what I've always tried to do. And sometimes people don't like that, because sometimes planning, as zoning does, take away some of your private property rights. But
You've got one more that wants to speak.
Yes, sir. If you'll state your name and your address for the record when you come up, and then we'll close this. Afterwards, we've got a lot more agenda to go to, sir.
I do want to say that I think part of the goals of all of this is to make the property values along Greeno Road higher than they are now. I mean, I mean, that's part of what our anticipation is. And I may be completely wrong about that, but, you know, we're trying to make it pleasantly appealing corridor. We're trying to make it something that people are attracted to. And I think all of those things increase property value. Am I wrong about that?
Yes, sir. If you'll state your address for Emily, please.
I'm Richard Thompson. address 2648 U., Alabama, 36532. Again, I'm Richard Thompson. My wife and I, we purchased 425 feet, 421 feet of Greeno Road, Shelby Gere's old parcel by parcel by parcel. And we look at the GRC here. Can you roll on down to Southern District or Zone, wherever you're going? Okay, uses. I'm intrigued by two of the gentlemen here saying it will do nothing but increase our rights. Well, right now, we have unlimited rights, unlimited. There's no zoning. We're in the county, but if it's, if we're annexed, then we'll get thrown under this carpet. Right now, we've, we've got one, two, three, four, five uses. Our neighbors on across the road, they have offices. We're not allowed to have offices on our side by this. You can have a service station, a motel with 30 rooms, we got room and board or something like that if we want to live there. We're effectively losing 75% of our property value if this is adopted, because it will reduce the amount of people that want to purchase our property in the future by 75%. Did you do those numbers? Can you figure that out? Right now, we have unlimited uses. And you can come up there and say, "I want to put a tattoo parlor in," or whatever. You can do it. But if we decide to elect to sell our property, only five uses we can get out of. And our neighbors across the street have doctor's offices, a dentist's office, a foot doctor, there's a insurance, there's a dentist. We're not allowed to have that. We'll be relegated on the low end, the greasy portion of it. We cannot have, by this, an office over there on our side of the road. Is there any way, is that written in stone? Anyone get an office we wanted one?
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, that you couldn't have an office. Buford, do you understand that?
You can't have it. No offices.
So, Mr. Chairman, don't want to get too far off the rails on this, obviously. And I appreciate Mr. Thompson for coming today. It depends upon the underlying zoning of the property, if it's annexed. And, you know, and, and we're talking about scenarios. So we're talking about scenarios about something that could happen. So if that property, if a piece of property is ever sold, and there's a petition for annexation by the new property owner, it stands to reason that that property owner would request a conditional annexation to the zoning district they prefer. And so if it was brought into the city as B2, for example, certainly an office would be allowed.
Well, the reason that we're doing this is so that those residential properties will feel comfortable rezoning them commercial. The reason that we are looking at doing this is to feel comfortable rezoning residential properties commercial. The zonings that we've been rezoning, we have been rezoning under PUDs, so that we've had the buffers that the city has wanted. And to try to make, as Debra said, the, the attractive developments that have gone in have been attractive due to those buffers and what's been required in the PUDs.
We bought a dock down there.
So what we're looking at doing in, in the south there is, is if your area's unzoned, then you're not affected anyway.
Unless it's annexed by the city, and there's been a push on to annex us down there. I know there has been.
And then if it's, if it's residential, then
It's unzoned, sir. It's nothing.
I understand. Then, then you're not affected by this. So
It will be if it's annexed, and the city wants to annex. See, Bart, I caught him down there one time with a highlighter. They highlighted me in, trying to get me to the city limits. I saw, I said, "I'm not in the city limits." I said, "You got to get that highlight off of there by 2:30." They got off at 2:45. They've done all kind of shenanigans around here to try to hook us up, to get us annexed. But you don't follow my math, huh?
Well, our point is, is that we can start rezoning residential properties commercial if we have an overlay, and that's been the goal of this process.
You don't know how this works then, obviously.
Yeah, you're right. I don't.
I, I agree with you. So if you don't know how it works, and you're an honest man, then drop it, and figure out what you got. This thing, I believe, came out of Fort Walton Farm. I believe it did. Do we want to be Fort Walton? I don't even want to drive through there. It's wall-to-wall, this and that. You can't see the beach anymore. But if you don't know what you're talking about, then let's drop it. I'm not being sarcastic. If you're a man of your word, you said you don't know what you're talking about, let's drop it. The numbers are right. We'll lose 75% of our value if you come in and throw this carpet on top of us. You know what the origin of zoning was? It was Rome. It was a fire prevention. Rome was, houses were jammed up next together, next together. Place burned down. So the purpose of zoning was spread it out. Well, we're jamming together, lot lines. You're giving lot lines. You don't even know what zoning's about anymore. I'm getting up for ours, but drop it. I wouldn't have known about this meeting. A friend of mine told a friend of mine, and here I am.
Okay.
It's, it's boring.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anytime.
I'm not on this speaking list. Could I have two minutes?
I'm sorry, sir?
I'm not on this speaking list.
Yeah, you can have two minutes, and then we're going to go on to the next item on the agenda.
They've been talking about Greeno for a long time. I remember Greeno being a dirt road. And we, everybody wants to compare Greeno with Airport Boulevard. Greeno Road will never be an Airport Boulevard, because we don't have the population around. And another thing, it's might, whether it's legal or customary, notify people that are affected by any change of property. I've worked for the League of Municipalities after I retired for 10 years. Alabama Regional Planning Commission, we used to have six or seven offices around Alabama. Show me one comprehensive plan in the state of Alabama that's been gone by. Here you are. Show me one in the state of Alabama, and they're very expensive. I don't know what they are now. Used to be $100,000 to revise. $200,000 or more, come up with a new one. And show me one. Appreciate it.
Thank you. By the way, when my, when my dad was young, Airport Boulevard was a dirt road, and there wasn't much population out there either. We're moving on, I'm sorry. But you can come
Red Street, by the way.
Yes. Moving on, the next item on the agenda. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the request of Mullins LLC to rezone property from RA Agricultural to a PUD. Properties located southwest corner of intersection of Highway 181 and Bay Meadows Avenue.
Just a second for let the crowd out.
I'm sorry, y'all are about to be unemployed because we're not having any more zoning and I'm...
Still subdivision cases to review.
I want to build a few high-rise buildings around here. See what, who doesn't want zoning then. Sure did. Let's roll.
So next up is ZC 19.07, Live Oak Estates. Thanks for having us this evening.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, thank you for your time tonight. My name's Mike Jeffries, work for the City of Fairhoop, city planner. As I said, this is a zoning change from RA to a PUD. Case is ZC 19.07, Live Oak Estates. We have heard this case previously. It was tabled, taken back, revised. We had an informal review last month about it and now the applicant has resubmitted and we are here tonight. And applicant's requesting a rezoning of approximately 38 acres from RA, which is residential agriculture, to a PUD, a planned unit development. The property is located at the southwest corner of Bay Meadows Avenue and State Highway 181. The applicant is proposing 99 single-family dwelling units on approximately 33.66 acres and the remainder, approximately 4.3 acres, is reserved for a future commercial parcel requiring a standalone site plan. The new requested density is 2.94 units per acre. Just to remind all the commissioners, the previous density requested was 3.18 and the number of lots has reduced from 107 to 99. On the screen on the left, you'll see where the subject property is and currently zoned. RA surrounded by R2 to the north and to the west. Attaches to Twin Beach Estates, which is the light blue, another planned unit development to the south. And across the street is unzoned Baldwin County property and also another planned unit development, Firethorn. And on the right, you can see an aerial of the subject property. It's mostly open farmland with a few vegetation around the perimeter with three structures currently on the site. This is just a color snapshot of what the proposed PUD is giving you. And I'll kind of note the biggest differences from what this plan is to what the previous plan was. As I said, the density has gone from 107 requested dwelling units to 99 dwelling units. The reduction in the actual unit count has increased the green space in the middle that designated green where the mail kiosk will be. It has increased the size around the pond, the opening there for the green space where there's proposed to be trails, gazebos, picnic tables of that. And then on the west side, that green space, natural green space with natural vegetative landscaping is retained, has also increased in size. And you'll notice, one of the biggest changes is there's only one access point off of Bay Meadows as opposed to two, which increased part of the buffer on the northwest corner of the property from Bay Meadows and the adjacent properties. Compliance with the comprehensive plan. This is, items 1 through 9 out of the zoning ordinance, Article 2, Section C, Point 1, is a criteria that applications shall be based on. The first one is compliance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed PUD is a multi-use development with most of the property consisting of single-family dwelling units and a buffered from State Highway 181 by a future commercial parcel. The subject property is categorized as residential in the comprehensive plan. Therefore, the requested zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan guidance in terms of residential use. Compliance with the standards, goals, and intent of the ordinance. The purpose of this district is intended to encourage innovative development that meets the comprehensive plan goals and is tailored to the unique constraints and conditions of a particular site. This district allows flexibility in uses, designs, and building layouts as opposed to other zoning districts to better serve the community needs. The table below is the proposed residential lot dimensions. They have 52-foot wide lots and 75-foot wide lots. And the setbacks, as you can see, the front are 20, rear's 15, a 6-foot side setback and a 7.5-foot side setback for the wider lots and a 20-foot street side setback. And the commercial parcel itself is subject to a standalone site plan at the time of development. And part of what makes this PUD, if you want to call it innovative or unique, is that in order to have 52-foot wide lots and 75-foot wide lots and a commercial aspect with the same development, a PUD or planned unit development is the only avenue that they have to go for this. The only other option for them would be to subdivide the property into multiple lots, go through several separate rezoning cases to try to get the same configuration. Number three, the character of the surrounding property, including any pending development activity. The proposed PUD will utilize lots that are 75 by 120 feet, 75 by 130, and 52 by 130 feet in width. The reduction of some of the 75 by 120-foot lots allow for some extra buffering along Bay Meadows Avenue, protecting several of the large oak trees that I know everybody's, they've driven down Bay Meadows, has seen the scenery and we have lots of talks of trees and saving trees. And that is to incorporate saving those as extra buffering, not counting the width of the right-of-way from edge of pavement. There's also extra buffering to the west. The site plan indicates a green belt along the perimeter separating the subject property's lots and those adjacent to the property. The buffering and separation are used as mitigation measures between the similar lot sizes. The site plan also shows two points of access. One, as I mentioned, is from Bay Meadows Avenue and one is using to connect to Twin Beach Estates, which has the higher density of 3.18 and similar lot sizes. They have 52 and 75-foot wide lots as well. On the right side of the screen, you can see the subject property in the center and the buffer area is outlined in black and grayed in. That was a quarter-mile buffer used to calculate the density. And not to jump too far off in it, but when the calculations were done, a weighted actual, which is what is actually on the ground for the area that is inside the buffer alone, was 1.09. And what would be allowed by right to build in any of that area, based on all of the properties in that buffering area, was 2.94. Add the two together to get an average, for the weighted average, and it came to 2.01. And the requested density is down to 2.94, which is the same as the weighted allowable determined by the quarter-mile buffer. And the quarter-mile buffer is used as kind of an industry standard. That is typically a distance that is walkable to get from point A to point B without having to get into a car. So it kind of defines the area of a neighborhood by definition. And part of it, you can see on the screen, on the picture, where on the west side, there are very large R2-sized zone lots. Some of them are about 2.7, 2.8 acres, where the minimum lot size for an R2 is subdivided is a quarter of an acre, which allows these properties possible subdivisions in the future. And three of those have previously occurred. The Bruton Meadows subdivision, one lot, one lot out of those was subdivided into four. A one lot was subdivided into two and one lot was subdivided into three. And those last three slides are all excerpts of the recorded plats that are recorded with Baldwin County Probate that went through the subdivision process and were divided further. Number four, adequacy of public infrastructure to support the proposed development. Fairhoop Utilities water and power are readily available and Fairhoop Utilities sewer and gas can be made available and that would be done during the subdivision process. Impacts on natural resources, including existing conditions and ongoing post-development conditions. The subject property is located on previously farmed land. There's no indication of wetlands being present. And the image to the right side is a topographic map. The high point is at approximately 115 at the northwest corner and the low point at an elevation of approximately 80 is the southeast corner. And the preliminary site plan shows the retention or detention pond being on that southeast corner of the property to capture and treat all the stormwater runoff. Number six is compliance with other laws and regulations of the city. At the time of development, all applicable laws will be applied. Compliance with other applicable laws and regulations of other jurisdictions. Again, at the time of development, all the applicable laws will be applied. Number eight, impacts on adjacent property, including noise, traffic, visual intrusions, potential physical impacts in property values. Staff does not anticipate any significant issues related to this criteria. Number nine is impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, including noise, traffic, visible intrusions, potential physical impacts in property values. Staff doesn't anticipate any significant issues relating to this criteria. A traffic study was conducted and any recommended improvements at the actual time of subdivision will be required. Currently, the traffic study recommends that the intersection of Highway 181 and Bay Meadows be widened to accommodate a northbound left-turn lane. This lane will allow the future signal to operate with permitted and protected concurrent left-turn phasing for the northbound and southbound approaches. And a little side note, there is a trigger for the Firethorn development that will trigger the installation of a traffic light at this intersection. So this intersection is already been deemed to be a higher-volume intersection where a traffic light is inevitable and will be there in the future as soon as the buildout of Firethorn reaches a certain number of homes built. And ALDOT's future, this was brought up during the first meeting of the right-of-way and the expansion of 181. ALDOT has plans to continue the widening of 181 south from 104. And according to ALDOT, the project is on hold depending funding. However, they have indicated that much of the property for the additional right-of-way has been purchased or at least been identified for purchase. And the map below was provided from ALDOT depicting the area adjacent to this proposed development indicates the future expansion plan for the east side of 181 as a result of west right-of-way and east property. So, all of that to say, when 181 comes through, the additional right-of-way is coming from the other side and any of the detention or retention pond or any of the lots would not be affected by the right-of-way. And I threw in, we talked about compatibility and where, what it was compatible with. The next two slides is Twin Beach Estates and Firethorn. This is the approved PUD from the recorded ordinance showing the layout and lots. Twin Beach Estates, as I said, the lots in here was approved for 52 and 75-foot wide lots, one entrance off of Twin Beach and a future stub street for future development. And the approved site plan for Firethorn PUD, which was approved in 2000, middle of 2014. This is more of a traditional subdivision. It's lot, typical lot sizes are 100 by 150 feet, which is your typical R1 zoning. The biggest difference for becoming a PUD is that they were allowed a reduced front setback and a higher building elevation was the differences. They also had several amenities for common area that they put inside the PUD, such as a recreation that fronts out on to 181. So just a few comments. The proposed PUD utilizes buffers that are above the minimum required to retain more of the natural forested vegetation, therefore removing less trees. The large pond is to be used as an amenity, not just a catch basin to capture the stormwater. The area around the pond is designed to be able to be used for passive recreation and the pond itself for active recreation, such as fishing or possibly kayaking. Developers proposing a pond that will meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations that allow for 30% of that area to be counted as green space. Currently, there's 22.8% green spaces provided, which exceeds the required 15% without it. So if approved, the green space is likely to be increased during the subdivision process, granted that the pond still reach, meets that criteria of the 3 to 1 slope and being able to be used for passive and active recreation. There's a large green in the middle of the development that provides a centralized area for the mail kiosk and room for active and passive recreation alike. They have similar lot sizes to Twin Beach Estates, which would allow for a seamless transition between the two developments. Staff's recommendation is approval with the following conditions of ZC 19.07, Live Oak Estates, that the accessory dwelling setbacks shall be as below, which is our traditional accessory setbacks for all other residential districts. And two, they've already said that there's going to be a mandatory site plan review, but we just want to reiterate that any development on the commercial parcel shall go through a standalone site plan review. And just to note, the uses for this commercial in this PUD are to be as B4, as in our use table. And staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Joe Rector, along with some of the families here this evening, to be able to answer any question that you may have as well.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
I've got, I've got a question for Mike. The commercial parcel is a, I know you're saying standalone site plan review, but it's part of the PUD, right?
Yes, sir.
About a little connectivity between the residential and the commercial. I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what they would have anticipated for putting on that commercial property. But for someone that's a resident of this PUD, to have to go all the way out to Bay Meadows to come around to get onto that parcel doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, the use of that B4 commercial parcel is unknown at this time. It could be for office buildings. It could be for a number of any of the uses that are in the B4.
But does it make sense to get, have to leave subdivision to get to it?
The zone parcel that is out there might not necessarily be something that all the residents in the neighborhood would be utilizing.
Might not. Operative word is might not.
Might not. That if I had a crystal ball, we'd all be in a happy place.
I understand, but I mean, if it was, if there was, if there was a possibility of getting there and it did, it did require, or some of the residents would be using whatever's going to be there, certainly that would be a...
Well, there's currently, if you look up on the screen, they do have, through the landscape buffer that's required by the landscape ordinance, that is 20 feet and they actually have a 30-foot buffer with a walking trail that goes between them. So if that land use for what is on that commercial parcel, there's connectivity pedestrianally to get over there to it. So you could walk if it was some type of boutique or shops or something similar of that nature, it would be in walking distance and you wouldn't actually need to get in your car or vehicle and drive, period.
Maybe. Unless you're old and broken down like me and then you'd have to drive.
Well, no, you take your scooter because all the sidewalks are ADA accessible.
Is it wheelchair accessible?
Motorized scooter is.
I have a question. So, on Bay Meadow, you're going to widen that and at some point they're going to put a light on 181 because...
Bay Meadows is not widening.
It's not, is it going to be widened?
No, ma'am. The, right now, if I go back to the map that shows the widening, this is, on your screen, you see the two houses. That is the corner of Bay Meadows on the top of the screen and the right where they're talking about widening is State Highway 181.
Okay, I thought you, okay, I misinterpreted. Well, my thing is, at the other, so there's going to be two entrances, one off of Bay Meadow and one off of Twin Beach. And I know they did a traffic study, but I just don't understand this whole traffic study thing because this is more houses on there. At the end of Twin Beach, there's a red light. So if I'm trying to get into Twin Beach Estates and I'm making a left-hand turn, are we going to put a turning lane or anything there? Because I...
There's currently a turning lane at Twin Beach and 181.
No, no, no. If I'm trying to get into Twin Beach Estates.
Twin Beach Estates, you can only get into that from, currently from Twin Beach Road.
Yeah, but if I'm on Twin Beach and I'm trying to take a left into Twin Beach Estates to get into it...
Currently, there, no, ma'am, there is not a turning lane.
You can't do that?
No. Well, you can turn left into there, but there's not a designated left-in-only turning lane.
That's what I'm asking.
Her question is with this increased traffic with this new subdivision.
Yeah, because if I'm stopped to make a left-hand turn because I'm waiting on oncoming traffic, I've got that lane that needs to get to that light stopped. And that's a high, that's a high-traffic area.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And the traffic study, they took all the considerations for the connectivity of it connecting to this neighborhood and to connecting from Bay Meadows and... to this neighborhood and to connecting from Bay Meadows and being next to 181 and across the street where the resident, where the other PUD is, Firethorn.
Okay, we'll be putting in traffic, something's going to happen. That's what you say.
And another traffic study at the subdivision aspect of it would be done, and if there was an increase where now the study says something different is what would be mandated to, to occur. And that's something that's required from the county, required by state, that would have to be put in.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much, Mike. Ms. Mullins, would you like to go ahead and make your presentation now, and then I'll open the public hearing when you're finished?
Yes, thank you guys for allowing us to be heard tonight. My name is Joe Rector with Mullins LLC, and...
I almost gave you a promotion.
Yeah, I know. I was, I was taking note of that.
Yeah, Mr. Who-Bear is back there too.
Yes, we had this before, before, and we requested that it was tabled, because we had several folks from the public that expressed various comments and concerns, and we took also several of the comments from, from you guys before as well, some things that you wanted us to look at again. And then we brought it back for the informal last month with a few modifications. Heard some things that, that we took that were assumed not quite had been resolved yet, so we went back to the drawing board and made a few modifications, worked with staff to get a better understanding of the compatibility analysis and how that was being used here in this case. And what we've brought to you tonight is that modified, that modified plan. And a couple of the points I want to just reiterate is that we are now bringing you a plan that is 2.94 units per acre, and that is a number that was derived by the city's compatibility analysis. And where we've come back below the 3.19 that we were asking originally, which was, you know, we kept looking at the Twin Beach, that we were similar to that, and we were asking for that same. But we take in the comments that were made by the board about how the concept was to transition and to lower the density the farther you got away from Twin Beach and moved out. So we're taking that step down and going from the 3.19 down to the 2.94, dropped eight lots off that from the 107 down to the 99. What that also did is, in the city's formula for calculating the green space, it's now broken up to where if you're exceeding four units per acre, you have to have a 20%. If you're under that, it's 15%. Well, we were three-point something percent said, or three-point something units per acre of that, that usable density that's counted, and we said, you know, we're not going to try to split hairs on this, let's stick with the four point, the four units per acre number, which required 20% green space. And we're still exceeding that, even with the, with the, the stormwater pond, as Mike mentioned here, that, that may increase up to as much as 30%, or 20, or 22%, I'm sorry, which would be using 30% of that stormwater pond at a later time. We haven't even factored that into that yet. So my point to that is, we're far exceeding the green space to try to make sure that we've addressed these concerns with the trees along the north and the west in those corners where, you know, they were closer to some of those larger estate lots. Removing that second exit out onto Bay Meadows to where they were, some concerns about the houses that were directly across the street from that, and having that extra traffic there on that section of Bay Meadows pushing everything closer to 181. The connectivity to Twin Beach, you know, that was something that was actually looked at with the PUD on Twin Beach Estates that was approved as to providing that connection through to the north, and we're just connecting on and following that, that example that was set on that one there, and also, you know, per your own land development code to encourage that connectivity to disperse the number of cars that are coming out, so they're not concentrated at one spot like that. So that's, that's the goal here to, to try to do. The other thing I wanted to touch on, you were asking about the connectivity to the commercial. The reason we ended up with it the way, the way we've got it shown here right now is that one of the things I had kind of taken away from, I think, the first meeting, was that a goal to try to encourage pedestrian access and walkability to access the commercial. And so that's why we kind of laid it out this way to where we didn't have a direct connection so that it kind of encouraged people to try to walk or something. But I take your point well, that, you know, what if somebody wasn't able to walk to the commercial? And a very easy modification to that, if it was, if it was something that was desired by this board would, you know, we could, you know, we've got the space, we're exceeding the open space here on the, I'm looking at the east side adjacent to the commercial, where you're looking at lot 92, 91 in there, you know, we could shift those apart and stub a road to the, at least a right-of-way to the back of that commercial so that if we did want to, to have that as being a requirement, to have that commercial connectivity as well...
That'd be a good idea. You could have a pedestrian and then make a commercial if it made sense.
Right. And we could open up the right-of-way and, and you, and like you say, just have it a pedestrian access now, and then later on, if it was decided that the use of the commercial worked to make it connective...
That'd be great. Be great. Probably what you're going to end up, it's not going to be automobiles driving through there, with what I see in Fairhope, it's going to be golf carts.
Yeah. Well, and, and two, we also, as you noticed, we've taken the mini-storage component out and, and gone with the beef, more traditional B4. So there may, and, and again, like we were thinking before, we didn't want to encourage people driving through there when it was mini-storage, but if it is something else like the coffee shop or whatever that has been discussed before, you could have that connectivity, so...
That'd be great.
Yeah. But, other than that, I think that, that's pretty much the, the story there on that. Mike covered pretty much everything. I have with me tonight, Mr. Larry Lilly, who is a member of the Moyes family, that if there's any questions that you happen to have for him, he could answer those as well too. And we'll just be available to answer any other questions or comments after the public...
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions while he's here? All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and then get you back. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. The first person I have on the list is, is it Larry Williams?
Mark Richek.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Mark Richek.
Summer?
No, one more.
They have the one, okay.
My vote. It should be Mark Richek.
Ah, Mark Richek, oh yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Mark Richek, 9727 Derby Lane. I'm an adjacent landowner on Derby Lane. I'm one of the three acre parcels to the west of this subdivision. I'm opposed to this request. When they came back last month, it had access to 181, but 78 lots. I see no significant improvement to this or their original plan. I have a petition signed by the members of the Bay Meadows subdivision. I'd like to enter that into the record. Thank you. It is currently zoned for 13 houses. This proposal, we believe, is too dense. It is still not consistent with 87% of the adjacent parcels. It is not in compliance with a comprehensive plan with spot rezoning for commercial. In this particular case, we think size matters. The adjacent parcels on the west are 2.9 acres in size, to the east are greater than three acres in size, and the adjacent parcels to the north are one acres in size. The adjacent landowners are the only ones that were notified of this meeting. The density compatibility awareness is flawed if they use a quarter-mile buffer and then they do not notify everybody within that quarter-mile buffer. The larger R2 lots to the west of the subject property cannot be subdivided. They have restricted deeds, and they do not have enough frontage on the road to be subdivided. The weighted actual of 1.0 per acre is closer to the correct number that should be used for this. The rezoning request, again, should have access to 181. This will have a significant impact on adjacent property owners. The high density will change the character of the neighborhood in a negative way. The value of the property is in the privacy and of raising a family. No dollar amount can be suggested for this quality of life. This zoning is not superior to the current zoning that is on the property. Thank you for your time. I ask you to deny this request. Do you have any questions? Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, there's no other names here, but would anybody else wish to speak to the side or so now's your chance? Yes, sir. And again, if you'll state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
9763 Bay Meadows Avenue. Thank you. I don't know how many of y'all have been on Bay Meadows Avenue. I know you said you have. It's nothing more than a pick trail. And in front of my house, the asphalt's even starting to break. You can't put an entrance there with 100 and, or 99 houses, you're looking at approximately 200 vehicles. If you put the entrance that close to 181, with a red light or without a red light, they're going to back up, and they're going to start going down toward Thompson Hall and up to Fairhope Avenue and across, and you've got another traffic nightmare. It's just, it's too much traffic for that road. And studies are not, you can't tell me a road that handles maybe five or six cars a day, and now you're going to put 200 cars on it, isn't going to impact my privacy, noise, what have you. That, that doesn't make sense. And again, last meeting, I was listening to the proposals of a couple of other developments right there on 181. Their entrances to the property were on 181. I don't understand why the entrance can't be on 181 instead of Bay Meadows to start with. That's just a question. If ALDOT's going to allow it in one place, they should allow it in the other. And my third comment, I really don't see why we need a business section at that location. There's plenty of business within distance of driving, what have you. Walmart's right up the street. I just don't think we need it, and you could use that for an entrance. I think that's basically covered what I'm wanting to say. I don't really like the idea of the houses going in there. I realize it's going to be progress, but I think they need to really reconsider where they're going to enter. And removing eight houses from 107 to 99, that's not a big difference as far as our way of living. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Richard, the 181 entrance would be an ALDOT question, wouldn't it? That wouldn't really be a City of Fairhope question, would it?
Yeah, and, and since ALDOT has already specified that, that intersection is being upgraded as part of Firethorn's requirement, they're not going to issue a full access on 181 for this property, since it has an equal amount of length along Bay Meadows Road that, that connects to the ALDOT right-of-way. And the commercial area, if they get an access, will be a right-in route, right-out only. It will not allow for you to turn across traffic there. So they would have to have a connection back to Bay Meadows to use the light if they needed to go northbound on the road. So I, there's just no way that there's going to get an entrance, a multi, a full-service entrance at this location. And I understand, you're going to have a red light, a signal at Bay Meadows, Firethorn, and 181. You already have one at Twin Beach. They're a half-mile apart, and that is the, that is the minimum spacing for that classification road that they allow for signals. So ALDOT would not permit any type of, of signal intersection between those two.
You need to get up and say it in the microphone.
In the proposal for the construction of the housing and apartments on Fairhope Avenue and 181, they have two entrances into 181, and one of them's right by the red light. So how is it possible there, but not possible where we are?
Those were, those were proposed, and as I remember last month, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but I believe you were here, but I think what was determined, there was no way that they would be able to have those as a full-service entryway...
Right.
Or exit, ingress and egress. It would be a right-in and a right-out.
Okay.
They would not be, they wouldn't be full service.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Elliot Sylvester, 9849 Bay Meadows Avenue. 9849 Bay Meadows, so right across from the entrance that's going to be going up to Bay Meadows. So I, I'm sorry to be against progress and building and all that kind of stuff, but I really do think that that whole area is going to lose a lot of its character. Firethorn is not even close to being complete, nothing, no one lives yet in the Twin Beach Estates they keep referring to at all. And you're going to dump 100 cars onto Bay Meadows. The other Saturday, a week ago, I sat outside for over two hours with my four-year-old granddaughter, and we counted seven cars in two hours. And if you've got 99 homes, you know you're going to have two cars per, and if only half of them use the Bay Meadows exit, that's going to be 100 cars. We, we, all I can say is, you're, really, please, please put the brakes in this area. I was here last month when they gave you proposed area for, and I understand, because it's unzoned, that area diagonally across from, from Walmart, which is who knows how many residents would have lived in there, that's less than a mile away. I mean, the whole area is just going to get so overly built so quickly. Please, please put the brakes on. When we bought our house over a year ago, when they told us that that was zone RA, I got super excited, because I assumed that there would be 15 multimillion-dollar homes built across. I'm all for it. I think that'd be fantastic and beautiful and great for Fairhope. But if, if you put another 100 homes stacking, some of them as far apart as my arm span right now, that's six feet, I just think it's too much, too fast.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to the side? Yes, sir.
Garrett Dover, 309th Street, Fairhope. They're not too distant past the Wheat's Bay Watershed Management Plan was produced, and that would be a very significant tool for use in planning development in the Wheat's Bay Watershed. This, this area would be in that Watershed, and I recommend that we begin considering and developing the practice of using that Watershed Management Plan as a tool in the, in planning the, the development of this area. Thanks.
Thank you. That is a good point. We have our pretty heavy water restrictions, but we, there are some places you might want the water to go fast, and we haven't gotten to staging yet, which is probably another layer we should get to. Anybody else wish to speak to Live Oaks Estates? Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to reiterate what everybody says here. It's active. You can't possibly, you can't possibly not be impacted by all of the homes, the cars, the moving, and not only this neighborhood, but the Twin Beach neighborhood as well. I get that. This neighborhood, to me, doesn't represent what is already there. This is an old neighborhood. My home is at least three, five-years-old. I know it's half the oldest on the street in the world. I'm all for it. As Mr. Jefferson said, we have neighborhood lots, you know, little lots on the north side of Bay Meadows and further down, where this is actually kind of, those are half the little lots. It's one, I don't know. So I just wanted to kind of, just wanted to reiterate.
Thank you very much.
Can't hear me at all?
I could hear you.
You gotta say it all over again.
Yes, ma'am.
Candy Robertson, 973, Run Bay Meadows Avenue. So far, I haven't heard anybody address the infrastructure issues in our neighborhood. Are the utilities coming from 44? The sewage, the water, the power, and all that? Or are they gonna come down 181 or from Bay Meadows?
This is a PUD, so this is basically a recommendation that we make to the City Council for a zoning district.
Right, I understand.
If, so, we're not at the point that the utility, this would then come back for a site plan review, and that's when the utilities would be drawn in. I'm, excuse me, subdivision review.
So then the City Council is who we talk to about the infrastructure?
We'll make a recommendation, but then this will come back under a subdivision for the residential and a site plan review for the commercial. And at that point, the water retention, like they show where the, where the pond is gonna be, but they don't have the cubic yards it's gonna hold or all of the engineering calculations.
No, I mean like the utilities.
I'm just saying, all, Richard might tell you where the utilities are coming from, but it, but it may not be a done deal yet.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because we have septic tanks in our neighborhood. We don't have sewer. And the water, since they put the two subdivisions on the ends of our streets, Sedgefield and Firethorn, when you turn our water on in the morning, it's a trickle. We don't have any water pressure from like 5:00 in the morning till like 9:00 o'clock. So nobody, other water's gonna be piggybacked off of Bay Meadows, correct?
I look at the distribution system, but I don't know why, this person I've heard is no water pressure.
Oh, it's horrible. And we have a broken water main in our area at least once a month from somewhere. Fiber optics, subdivisions, add-on.
We are having, we are having those problems.
I know, and that's why I'm saying, it's not just a matter of another subdivision, it's a matter of our area just can't seem to support this. And like, when you say Bay Meadows, two cars can hardly pass. Well, all the construction is gonna be a nightmare of the trucks and the dump trucks and the deliveries and all that stuff going to the, to the, to the PUD. Can there be like a construction entrance off of 44 or someplace where all that massive amount of heavy equipment will not be coming down our tiny little road? That's what I mean about infrastructure. I just have questions about that. To approve the rezoning for this huge area, you have to consider the infrastructure that's gonna support it.
Right.
And that's just what I'd like to y'all to think about with your rezoning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Every time I hear Mike Jeffries say, "No issues," or "No significant impact," I feel like my head's gonna explode. I, I can't imagine how anybody could say that. People on Bay Meadows' lives are gonna be profoundly affected by this if it's approved. I think anybody with an IQ over 75 knows that. Anybody coming out of that subdivision, turning right and approaching 181, if they see a queue of cars there, they're gonna go west immediately on Bay Meadows. A lot of people will be affected by this plan, but the people on Bay Meadows Avenue will be by far affected more than anyone else. If this plan is approved, there should be something for those residents and property owners. Their property values are also gonna be degraded significantly. Again, anybody with an IQ over 75 knows that. The proposed plan is to nearly triple the density, even with the FLOG, density and viability analysis that was done, that has plainly shown. I don't understand, by what authority is that done? You know, I guess I'm not, I admit I'm not knowledgeable about the comprehensive plan and all the rules and laws that affect planning and zoning. But the striking to me that that can be just simply, you know, recommended by this commission and approved by the City Council, and it's a done deal. I guess my, again, you know, I said it before, but the people on Bay Meadows should get something if this is approved. If not, monetary compensation, there should be at least, direct the developer to have a dedicated walking path or something down Bay Meadows so the residents that live there, whose lives are gonna be profoundly affected, at least get something out of it. Thank you.
Right. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? All right, at that time, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I'm sure we'd like to come back up. We had a number of questions, mostly talking about the traffic, which I don't know how much you can do about that as far as, of the density.
Yeah, most of the, most of the conversation about the traffic, a lot, again, as you, as you pointed out, this has got to go through the actual subdivision process after this. And it's got to go through all of the requirements that are in the Land Development Code specific to subdivision review, preliminary plat. This'll all be discussed more at that time, whenever we get into the actual design, issues with the stormwater, issues with the infrastructure, where the water, sewers come in from, pressures of those lines and things like that. So, you know, we don't usually do any of that design at this level, 'cause this is, like you said, is a zoning issue. You know, and I understand the opinions that, that exist, that people have, you know, well, if somebody comes out of there and they see a car, you know, at the stoplight, they're gonna turn left. But I can tell you, people that live in developments like this, once they done that, they've come out here and they've looked, they've seen there's cars there, they know what time cars are queuing, and then they've driven ever to the left and they've hit speed bump, the speed bump, and get to the end down to where they have to then turn and navigate through the left or right to go to, back to Twin Beach, more than likely, based on what we've seen in the study, is that they're not gonna do that. They're gonna go down to the connectivity that you've provided to Twin Beach and access Twin Beach that way. They're not gonna wind back through Bay Meadows and go that way more than once. And it's just, it's not typically how people function in these, in these type deals. They look for the easiest path out, and clearly, going to Twin Beach through the connectivity that's been provided to the subdivisions would be the easiest access. And, you know, I can appreciate some of the things I've heard too about, you know, one person, you know, their house was 20, 25-years-old, or in various different timeframes you've heard here, that the Moynihan family acquired this land back in the 50s, and they had it before most of these other houses that were around it were built. Those properties were rezoned from Ag to be R2 to get what they got now, and the Moynhans lived in, they had a house right there in the middle of it. Now, they are coming in to ask for rezoning to the next progression, and, you know, it's like the people who got their property rezoned to have houses built on it when the Moynhans lived there on this big 33-acre tract with nothing around it, you know? It's like, it's, you know, whichever one happens first, you know, then they come back and they try to do the next one. It's like, well, now I don't want those next door to me being rezoned. So it's like, there's always that, somebody was there, and then whenever progress happens, you know, they get locked in, they're there for 20 years, and they feel like then they have the precedence, you know, to ask, well, I don't want the next-door property being rezoned. So I understand that, but, you know, the Moynhans, they have had this for a long time, and they're looking now to move beyond just having a single parcel to be something that they can, you know, they invest in for their family. So that's what we've got here. So just ask you to keep that in consideration as well when you're making your decision.
Any questions for the developer? Yes, sir.
Seems like you could solve the issues that they are raising about Bay Meadows Avenue by eliminating the exit off of, out of this subdivision onto Bay Meadows Avenue. Is that a possibility? Have strictly, nope, okay. Is that, why is that not possible? Have strictly the exit from the subdivision down through Twin Beach Estates?
Because then you're gonna be funneling all that traffic out onto one road, and the connectivity is non-existent at that point. If you can't connect to the streets that the property is adjacent to and abuts upon, you're now going a quarter-mile from inside the development all the way out to Twin Beach Road to try to exit, and you're now, instead of putting maybe a percentage of these new lots into Live Oak Estates, from going, using that Twin Beach access to now forcing all of the residents, all 99 lots, to use that one access point going through. And with, it's not, it's not sound planning to have everything go out of one entrance if there's a possibility to utilize more than one. And, and we require that you have to have that, that those connections be made.
And plus, public safety, getting analysts, fire trucks, things like that.
Any other questions for the developer? You mentioned Twin Beach Estates, and you mentioned Firethorn on your density discussions. And, you know, I drove through and looked at Twin Beach Estates today, and frankly, kinda wanted my vote back. It just, I don't think there was a tree bigger around than my thumb. Some of the weeds were taller than the trees out there, and it just looked like, you know, that was a PUD just to hit additional density. How can you, you know, convince us that you're not bringing us this PUD just for density rather than requesting a R2 zoning or, or something else along those lines?
So, one way is right off with, if you look in the central part of the development, there are a lot of large trees that are in that location. That's why we picked that location for the Central Park. It's not gonna be an open space like you see on Twin Beach that you're talking about that was open, and it ends up being mostly a stormwater pond. That's a dry, it's a dry hole out there. This is gonna stay wooded, natural, and we're even increasing around the perimeter of it and everything to where we're ensuring that there is a true, treed, open, green space there in the center. As well on the west side and on the north, we've extended those buffers back beyond to protect those large majestic trees out there, quite frankly, so.
That's a 50-foot buffer to the north, isn't it?
It's a 50-foot buffer to the north, but then in the corner where there's some of those larger trees, where we, above 8, 9, 10, we not only shorten those, pull those lots back, but we, with that, the way the rear of those lot lines, it's gonna leave those large trees that provides a buffer to the folks that have the large estate lot there just to the west of us. So, will there be some cleared areas? Yes, like the 40, that 32 through 53 block that is toward the bottom, that is gonna be an area that's gonna be open, where it's gonna be, you know, some of the smaller houses. But along the perimeter of it, and all that that's adjacent to the, to the estate lots on the side, we're pushing that back a little farther to give a little more of that.
Twin Beach Estates last year was a cultivated field.
Yes.
So whatever, I mean, whatever they, whatever's there now, had to be put there.
I'm just saying, the trees, I have a question if it even means our, our, if it means our landscape recs, and I'm gonna look into that, but I mean, we'll see. Half the trees are dying out there right now.
And a lot of the areas where we're showing ours is, because there are some open field areas naturally on this site, and that's where the concentration of our lots are being shown. That's not saying there're not gonna be a tree cut down, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying that's where we tried, we laid this out with that in mind, that we wanted to leave as many of the trees. And then, as you note, around commercial and around the stormwater pond, we're supplementing those areas to, because there're not trees there now, to be able to bring trees in.
I like the 50-foot buffer, that and the 20-foot setbacks, you know, that's 70-feet off of Bay Meadows, which, from a visual perspective, should protect some of the character. I mean, obviously, there'll be more cars going through there, without a doubt. Commissioners, any further questions? If not all, thank you very much. If not all, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman. In regarding zoning change for case ZC 19.07, Live Oak Estates, I recommend, or I recommend that we recommend the City Council to approve.
I have a motion to make a recommendation to the City Council to approve the presentation for Live Oak Estates. Do you wanna say anything about connecting the commercial to the residential?
Yes, thank you very much. And with that proposed street that you discussed tying into the, your commercials area.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Yes, sir.
Additionally, if you're so inclined, Mr. Dyes, the written record doesn't show that the commercial area uses would be those available within the B4 area. I know Mike talked about it. If you intend that to be part of your motion, could you verbalize that in the record?
To do what, Kim?
That the commercial area that's to be developed in the future, the uses would be those available under the B4 designation.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you. I amend, amend the motion.
Motion to recommend approval of staff rec, to recommend to the City Council, subject to connectivity to the commercial area and that the commercial area be B4. Is that all right for your second?
I'll second.
And I've got a second. So I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes unanimously.
So at what point do we do a moratorium for building of your home? At what point do we do like a, a moratorium for building of your home? When do we say we're done? And when we...
I couldn't say that in bed, really.
Because this is getting really stupid. I mean, we're building all these subdivisions, and half of them are even filled, but, you know, people, it's just like, I have a piece of land, yeah. know, people, it's just like, I have a piece of land, yeah.
That's a supply and demand issue, you know?
I mean, I don't really, because like you're saying, at some point, you know, we're clear-cutting all this land, we're, we have sewer issues, we have so many other issues to be concerned about, but we're not. And we're, you know, like, related. She's like, we barely have any water, you know? It might be something more, but it may be something, you know, maybe. And at some point, we're going to run out of water, we're going to run out of everything, you know? It's like, at what point do we say, okay, we need to take the halt, we need to do an assessment and figure out in these subdivisions, what's the percentage of the homes that are actually vacant compared to what's full? Because if we have 30 subdivisions, and each one has 25 people living in it, you know, and we want 99 homes, we only have 25 there, you know? No one's buying. I don't know. It's just kind of weird to me.
What the market, what the market dictates, it dictates.
Yeah.
And I know what you're saying about stop.
Mike, are you ready now?
Oh, yeah. At some point, you've got our infrastructure.
All right. Are you ready down there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go. Oh, I'd like to mention before this that I am going to recuse myself from voting on this since our vice chair is not here. I'll go ahead and lead the meeting, but I'll state no opinion pro or con, and I won't vote on this next item. I've got a couple of real estate investments with the applicant, so it wouldn't be appropriate for me, appropriate for me to vote one way or the other. Normally, I'd recuse myself and sit out in the audience or in the back room, but since our vice chair is not here, I'll just go ahead and lead the meeting with just a neutral stance to that. But wanted to put that in the record, and if you'll mention to Emily to put that in the record after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, yes, sir, Mike.
So, this is case ZC 19.09, 303 Fells Avenue. This is a zoning change from R2 to B1. On the left side of the screen is your traditional zoning map with the subject property highlighted in green. Wanted to first note out that this piece of property is located in the central, central business district, which is one of the overlaying zoning districts that the city has. It is kind of located on the southwest corner of the, of the central business district. The north red properties that you see are zoned B1. The properties in the light pink are zoned B2. And the subject property and the parcels immediately adjacent to the east and west and south are R2-zoned pieces of property. And you can see on the right side, the aerial with the subject property highlighted in black. Applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property, which is in the central business district, from R2 medium-density, single-family residential district to B1, a local shopping district. The property currently contains a home that is to be converted to a real estate office if the zoning change request is approved. The subject property being in the central business district makes it appropriate for its underlying zoning to be commercial. The subject property, as I said, is boarded by R2-zoned properties to the east and to the west. Now, the property to the east is Bay Shore Ballet Academy, and the west side is First Church of Christ Scientists. The property to the north is zoned B1, and the area of the central business district is a half-block of contiguous B1 zoning on the west side of Delamar and Morphe Avenue. These are just a couple of photos, looking at the subject property, looking northwest from across the street on Fells. And on the next picture is just looking at the subject property, looking northeast from across the street at Fells. You can see it's just your traditional, older-model brick home that will be converted into a real estate, a real estate office if approved. And we'll go through the appropriate building permits for any of the renovations or additions that had to be done. The table to the right is just an excerpt from Fairhoop zoning ordinance reflecting the areas, if it's zoned B1 and B2, what the uses are. Staff believes that the appropriate zoning would be a B1 local shopping district. I mentioned B2 was in the general area as well. But B1, it allows for the office use requested by the applicant and is a less intense use than what the B2 use is. And again, here's just a picture, picture of the central business district south portion where the subject property is located at the southeast, southwest corner of the central business district. Staff recommends cases ZC 19.09, 303 Fells Avenue, rezoning from R2 to B1 be approved. Staff is happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Any questions for staff at this time?
How do you address the parking requirements? Is that done later, or does that need to be addressed?
No, sir, that would come for whatever use that they wanted to do on the property that it was in the use table. At that point, the, another review would take place to determine which parking would be required.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Mike. Emily, I said earlier when you were out, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote as Anil and I have some real estate investments together. But since our vice chair is not here, I'm just going to lead the meeting. And just for the audience, the Planning and Zoning Commission, I have no interest in this property whatsoever. The Planning and Zoning Commission, once again, since this is a rezoning, will simply make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council will ultimately approve whether or not the rezoning should be changed. And one thing to remember is even though the applicant says that he's looking to put a real estate office there, this is not a pud or a conditional rezoning. This is just, you know, a request for R2 to B1 so the applicant could get the zoning and sell the land the next day or change his mind. So, you know, look at the table, not just, you know, your thought of whether or not a real estate office should be there. With that said, anybody want to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant now?
Hi, my name's Anil Vera, and wanted to thank y'all for your time. This has been more fun than Jerry Springer Show, but if we had...
Not for me. I said I wasn't going to talk, excuse me.
If we had a wrestling match between Debbie Green and Lee Turner, I bet Debbie Green. So, anyway, the current property is 303 Fells Avenue. The surrounding properties are zoned B1 and B2, and this property is just zoned R2, and just wanted to bring it into compliance with the rest of the block. It is in the central business district. And the use right now is to make it a real estate office.
Any questions for the applicants? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this application? This is Fells Avenue, a request of rezoning from R2 to B1. Anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman. In reference to cases ZC 19.09, 303 Fells Avenue, rezoning from R2 to B1, I make a motion to recommend City Council approval.
I've got a motion to approve the recommendation to the City Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. And one extension please. All right. Next item on the agenda is a request for a rezoning from M1 to a pud, a 15-lot subdivision located on the west side of South Section Street.
Good evening again. As you said, this is ZC 19.12. It's Summer Lane Pud, a request to rezone it from M1 to a planned unit development. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of approximately 5.2 acres from M1 Light Industrial to a PUD planned unit development. The property is located approximately 300 feet south of the intersection of Pecan Avenue and Section Street, on the west side of Section Street. And the applicant is proposing 15 single-family dwelling units, and the requested density is 2.87 units per acre. On the left side of your screen, outlined in black, is the subject property. On the right side is the aerial image. You'll note on the, near the subject property across the street is the Fairhoop Public Works building. And there's a small parcel to the north that is also zoned M1, that is also currently owned by the same owner of this property, whose personal house is on that property. This is just a site plan for everybody's reference of where the property is going to be accessing Section Street, coming off of, and connecting to Summer Lane, which is a 40-foot currently paved right-of-way that abuts the subject property. And it's a very unique design and layout from what we traditionally see in our lot-and-block subdivisions. We'll go over the same criteria that we did for the previous pud. The requested zoning is a pud, which is intended to encourage innovative development that meets the comprehensive plan goals and is tailored to the unique constraints and conditions of a particular site. The proposed pud is a single-family residential use designed around the natural features and limited road frontage on Section Street and Summer Lane. This development proposes to connect to an existing dead-end street, improving connectivity, and the development is in walking distance to Fairhoop Parks and the downtown area. And on the right is just a snip from the comprehensive plan showing where the property is. It's pretty close to where that green node is to the north side of that. Compliance with the standards, goals, and intent of the ordinance. The purpose of this district is intended to encourage innovative development that meets the comprehensive plan goals and is tailored to unique constraints. This district allows flexibility in uses, designs, and building layouts, as opposed to other zoning districts, to better serve the community needs. The building setbacks that they're requesting is a front setback of 20 feet. The rear setback would be the back of the alley, a side setback of eight feet, street side of eight feet, a maximum building height of 30 feet, a maximum lot coverage of 32.5%. The parking, as we had mentioned before, for this development, they're providing four spaces per lot. Two of those would be enclosed or covered, and two spots could be outside. And there are 13 guest spaces at the roundabout. And I can go back between any of the slides if need be.
He said an eight-foot front setback?
No, sir, a 20-foot front setback, an eight-foot side setback, and an eight-foot street side.
What is street side for?
Street side would be a corner, a corner lot where it meets, where it meets both, both areas.
Got it, I got it.
And if this rezoning is approved, any subsequent subdivision plot must conform to the above standards, which will be included on the site plan. Character of the surrounding property, including any pending development activity? The proposed pud will utilize lots that are approximately 45 feet in width at the building setback line. The zoning of the surrounding property is R3 high-density, single-family to the north and southwest, and R2 medium-density, single-family to the west, north, and northwest. And as I mentioned, the M1 to the north and across Section Street on the east side. And the M1 property to the north, its current use is a single-family dwelling unit with the subject property owner's residence. And the M1 across the street is the City of Fairhoop Public Works. Adequacy of public infrastructure to support proposed development? Fairhoop utilities are readily available, and upsizing or improvement needs will be reviewed during the subdivision process. Impacts on natural resources, including existing conditions and ongoing post-development conditions? The subject property has a gully located on it that is proposed for, and there is a proposed retention or detention pond at the southeast corner of the property to capture and treat the stormwater runoff from the site before entering the gully. Now, additional LID techniques may be required during the subdivision process to ensure that post-development flow is less than or equal to pre-development flow, and to ensure that there's a minimum of 80% total suspended solids removal. Compliance with other laws and regulations of the city? At the time of development, all applicable laws of the city will be applied. There will be a need for various waivers from Fairhoop subdivision regulations during the subdivision process if the zoning change request is approved, and I'll get into a little bit more detail in a future slide. Compliance with other applicable laws and regulations of other jurisdictions? At the time of development, all applicable laws will be applied. Impacts on adjacent property, including noise, traffic, visible intrusions, potential physical impacts, and property values? Staff does not anticipate any significant issues relating to these criteria. A traffic study will be required for all applications that will generate an average daily traffic count of 1,000 trips or more, or which will generate 50 trips or more during any peak hour period, which, again, would be reviewed during the subdivision stage. Impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, including noise, traffic, visible, invisible intrusions, potential physical impacts, and property values? Staff does not anticipate any significant issues relating to this criteria. And again, a traffic study may be required at the time of development. A few comments. The proposed pud characterizes the intent of the pud district by proposing an innovative design that's not your typical lot and block subdivision that could not be done in any other zoning district. They've kind of taken a combination of R3 and R2 sized lots and setbacks and made a hybrid out of those. The proposed design is to allow for a community to be developed near the downtown area that has very minimal maintenance and promotes a pedestrian-friendly environment. And the applicant goes into more detail into their narrative on how the overall design is for a close-knit community where when you're sitting on your porch, you're looking across at your neighbors and not putting up fences to be hiding from your neighbors. The design for this community also incorporates some aspects that would require multiple waivers from the subdivision regulations to be approved by the planning commission.
Here's where I think we need to get on this. You know, we're going through all the generic stuff, but I think we need to get down to the nuts and bolts of, of we've got, you know, does our legal think we could approve this? And if it doesn't, do they want to withdraw it until they get the FEMA to come, you know?
Legally, legally, it can be approved. They've addressed the FEMA issue by moving the lots north outside of, outside of the floodway, which a future, if this was a, was approved pud, a future pud amendment could come in the future to move those lots further to the south and make it bigger.
Okay.
Right now, currently, they are outside of the floodway. They initially submitted a, their initial submission did not do that, so it was held off the last meeting. And then they resubmitted with a new drawing that is not, that the appropriate buffers and everything are in place the way that it's mapped by FEMA.
Okay.
But with the different waivers, they desire to have an entrance from Section Street that's gated, they wish to have private roads, they wish to have non-paved roads, and the private, non-paved roads then require a waiver to create lots on non-paved, publicly maintained roads. And the 15% green space requirement based on the net density is met, but only by counting the 16-foot alley as a continuous driveway and not a private right-of-way. During the subdivision process, this could require an additional waiver. And talking about the FEMA flood maps, there's an alleged, alleged mapping error on FEMA flood maps, and the applicant is in the process of requesting a letter of map amendment through FEMA. The floodway is mapped north of where the topographic survey shows the gully actually being located. Now, staff does not disagree that this may be a possible error, but because, because of this, the site had to be designed around where the floodway is mapped, not where the gully is topographically located. So, like I said, if the pud is approved, the LOMA was then granted by FEMA, a possible amendment to the pud in the future could be done to increase the lot size and other similar aspects of the design.
Are you satisfied with how it is now?
It currently...
From the FEMA LOMA standpoint, you're satisfied with how it's drawn compared to the floodplain now?
Yes, sir. Compared to where it's drawn now, where the floodplain is located, they are outside of that. They have the appropriate distance for the buffering to be outside of that floodway. It was just, it, their design had to be kind of tweaked a little bit to work around where the floodway was mapped.
Got it, okay.
But currently, as it sits, it is not, nothing is mapped inside of the floodway.
Mike, are you through?
Yes, sir. I was going to, staff recommends, although staff really likes the concept of everything, staff can't recommend approval for a pud that's going to require the planning commission to approve the various waivers that would be associated with the subdivision application.
Which brings my question. How many, how many waivers are we looking at? Or a variant, let's, don't call them a waiver, let's call them a variance. I mean, it looks like it more than four.
Possibly four, four to five.
My attitude about, and not really my attitude, but my understanding of variances are only supposed to be utilized in terms of hardships.
Yes, sir.
I don't really see hardship in, in this case unless somebody can show me something completely different. But a variance is supposed to, you don't do for one, you're not willing to do for all, and you don't start a precedent, you're not willing to carry on forever. A variance is, is supposed to be used to accommodate a hardship.
Yes, sir. They would go through the wa, they would have to go through the waiver criteria that's into subdivision regulations.
I understand, but I mean, especially when you got, I understand the concept, and I like, actually, I like the concept of, you know, pervious roads and things of that nature, but maybe somewhere else.
I like the concept, too. My biggest thing is the gated private, you know? I don't, didn't think we allowed gated or private.
We, we do not allow gated or private except for in the TR district, which is why that was also mentioned, as that's a, their desire to is to have one gate on Section Street, not on Summer Lane. But since it's still a gated, a gated community, and we don't allow that, that would be another, that would be a waiver that they would have to give a narrative for, express why they needed it, and then try to get staff's recommendation that we would then give to you during the subdivision application, which then you would then have to approve the waiver in order to approve the actual subdivision.
All right. All right.
So the waivers are gated, private, and then non-paved?
That would be some of just -- without actually going through a subdivision review of it, going through just a PUD and looking at some of the major things that jumped out, those were the big things that we know for sure would require a waiver at the subdivision stage. And for that reason, staff has to recommend denial of this.
If we just say -- I'm not saying we do or don't, but just if we wanted to grant all the waivers, what kind of legal footing? I mean, does that make you start breaking out in hives, or what kind of legal footing does that put us on?
If he doesn't, it will move.
I'd be concerned about it, yes, sir. I'm -- that's not before us. I do think if you're -- with the certainty that this development along the lines of this PUD would require at least, and I can count, three waivers and possibly more, that would be a sufficient basis to deny this PUD.
Any questions for staff?
I'll just make it one more time. I mean, it's all about precedent. And I mean, it's all about who comes next, and then where do you draw the line? If you don't have a definitive point that you can place your finger, you've opened yourself up to one heck of a can of worms.
And I agree with you. I like the concept of that very much.
I do, too.
Yes, sir. And I have Mr. Steve Humphrey is here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions and the speaker as well.
All right, Steve. Gee, I thought you were going to turn me down before you let me speak.
No, no.
I had Mike almost telling you that he liked the project, and he just couldn't get him to say, "Go ahead and approve it." So give me the chance. We do believe this is a unique design. We do believe this is perfect for what a PUD represents. I think everybody would agree with, in general, that is the case. We met with staff early on, and predecessor was there, and I know we discussed gate, and I don't think we were told in that meeting we couldn't do a gate. We moved forward, be quite honest. You could take the gate away, you could take the private roadway away, you could take the brick pavers away, we'll do asphalt. That was never an issue for this development. So you could take three waivers away tonight and approve the project. That is not what this project is about. We wanted the private gate just because of the connectivity to Summer Lane. We felt like this would help through traffic. It is also across the street from M1 property, would give us some privacy. The private street would be certainly something because we were doing brick pavers, we understood that the city certainly wouldn't take maintenance of that over. So we felt like all of those elements added to somewhat the glamour, if you will, of this type of development. And my goodness, when you do a PUD and you want uniqueness, it's almost like we're being punished now for trying to be too unique and create something that is unique. But if that's the case, the city doesn't want brick pavings, and you don't want a gated entryway, and you want to take over maintenance of roadways, our developer is more than welcome to go with that. So please, don't grant waivers for those and accept the fact that we'll go with what I hear you saying you want. So we didn't come tonight with the intent to say, "Oh, my goodness, you can't do that for us, then we'll go away." This project is too unique for that. We did go through the trouble of reworking the layout. The layout, I hope for the property owners that were here, we did have a community meeting early on in this project with them out on site, folks that were there at that meeting, and I can't say that everybody here tonight was at that meeting, but those that were there, I think, liked the uniqueness of the project. And we did have to make a minor change, but the layout to them should look identical. The only thing we had to do was pull that one corner out of the floodway. It's unfortunate that we got an error there in a map that we feel very strongly about. My firm, in fact, not my office, but our firm, Dewberry, did a lot of the FEMA remapping for this April 2019 plan that came out. But it's my understanding that this area was not even part of that. It was removed from that study for whatever reason. I wished it had not been, because this area needs to be addressed. We have asked FEMA to look at it, but if it doesn't change, that's fine. We've pulled the lot layout away from it so that we're not affected by it if it has to stay like it is. So we've gone through some efforts, I think, to make those adjustments. So I would hope that we get rid of those three waivers. That makes it a little bit more comfortable for you and what we're doing. Be quite honest, I've been doing this for a long time. When you do PUDs, you're always asking for -- PUDs are generally that way. They're always asking for some leniency from setbacks. Those are waivers. We're not asking for a variance from a board of adjustments. These are waivers that you have the ability to grant. If you don't like those other items, take them off.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions for the developer while he's here?
Mr. Dewberry can lay it out there, can't he?
He can. And you're right about FEMA.
Yeah.
I'd be glad to -- I'd probably cut my presentation in half. The developer's here, the owner's here, but I'll be glad to answer any other questions you have. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we'll call you back up.
Okay.
We're going to get your money's worth out of you tonight.
I know you will. Had to sit through all this, we got to get you to do something. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir. Again, if you'd just state your name and your address to Emily, please.
My name is Harvey Doney. I'm on Southern Run. Good evening. I live on Big Head Gully, just downstream of where this development would go into place. I have lived there for 17 years and have watched water flow during storms and during hurricanes. The water currently tops and sometimes runs over Southern Run because of water coming down Big Head Gully. Over the last winter months, we had a new lot graded for parking industrial vehicles just upstream from us, which is increasing water flow into Big Head Gully. This development could also increase water flow. I noticed there is a retention pond, which would help with normal rains, but in the event of a heavy rainstorm during a hurricane, my concern is that water will come down Big Head Gully over top Southern Run and back up into our property. We have an acre of land on the -- we're on the east side of Southern Run. Our property backs up to former Mayor Cant's property. So all of us property owners along there are concerned that water's going to back up into our property. So that's one consideration. The other thing is, if you've been out to look at this parcel of land, it's quite beautiful. It's a stand of long-leaf pine trees, and I assume that all those pine trees would have to be removed, most of them, and I hate to see that happen. I would suggest that a better use for this property would be a city park because of the beauty of the natural surroundings. So thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Hank Mullins.
First give the address.
Eight Summer Lane.
Is that it?
Okay. First of all, I would like to say this has been quite educational for a 62-year-old. Second of all, I would like to say thank you to the commission members for serving the city. And third, I'd like to say thank you for the city employees for doing the job. My wife Claudia and I have been neighbors of Francis' bong for 25 years. Our property that we live on is adjacent to Francis's property, and for 25 years, she has been an absolute fantastic neighbor. I just hope that Claudia and I have been half a neighbor to her that she's been to us. And I'm glad to hear some of the things have been said since you all talked about the initial analysis or response and all, because obviously, everybody's aware of the Bong family and how long they've been in Fairhope, and aren't you talking about bearings, and you're talking about exceptions or whatever else? Y'all all like the way this looks. Well, what better time to look at some things and say, "Hey, this is a little bit new. This looks good, but we'd have to have some changes, some bearings," because we heard that three out of the four maybe you wouldn't have to have. But, I mean, things change. People like things. Just because they don't fit into what you have now doesn't mean it can't be changed. That's why y'all are here. So even though Claudia and I, personal preference, we would probably love the thing to be a little less dense, we wouldn't want the density of it as it is, you know, now, or being some kind of holdup and approving it or suggesting it to go through. So as people that have been there for 25 years, you know, people are funny about change. We've loved our 25 years there. I don't think anything's going to change about us loving our time on Summer Lane because Francis has chosen to do something with her property. And that's the other thing. It's zone, light, industrial. How many different things could you have done with that piece of property or sold it to people that would have done various things that you know you wouldn't like and the City of Fairhope wouldn't like? But have you done that? No, you haven't done that. You've kept everybody, your neighbors, in the back of your mind, their thoughts, what they think about it, and the City of Fairhope as well. And I'll have to say, I know some things that you've done with the city and interactions with the city, and you've been a dad-blame good steward for the City of Fairhope and a good neighbor to the City of Fairhope. So with all that said, Claudia and I don't really have a problem with it, and we'd like to y'all to recommend this to the city council.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? How much do y'all pay him, by the way? I've never seen somebody speak positively on something before. We got to check that bank account next month. Yes, ma'am.
I think he needs to get part of Mr. Dewberry's speech.
Tell you what. I tell you what, Steve, you go on home, Steve. Yes, sir.
Mary Lou Duffy, nine Summer Lane. The only thing I would like to add to what Hank said is, without delay.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Case Larder. I live at 5053 on the corner of Summer Lane. And everything that Hank and Mary Lou said, yes. And if you can do one quick waiver and do away with the other three, because he already did, let it go through. It's going to be a real nice thing for us, for us and for Fairhope. It's going to set a precedent, so let it come. Case Larder, 5053.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Can we ask Kim, though? Back on the same question, Kim. All right. So this is a request for a PUD. Unique design, unique changes, whatever. So with the waivers that are being requested, do we have an issue?
Because of that, I think you have the flexibility to go either way. The waivers aren't on the table tonight, but we just know they're coming. And so, and the certainty of that from the -- that's presented by this site plan itself would give the commission a basis to deny this or recommend denial to the city council.
I think, you know, personally, I like the design very much with the exception of the private streets. That gives me real heartburn, especially setting a precedent that then someone else comes in with the PUD and says, "Hey, we want private streets," or "We want private streets." And that is just something that all of the city planners who have talked to us, talk about how important connectivity is and not having private streets and exclusivity, et cetera. And just from a principle, I don't care for the private streets, but the uniqueness of it, I think is really cool in the circuit.
But we get another shot. We get a shot at it if the city council approves it.
But I'm saying, they come back and we just say, "Sure, no private streets."
But the city allows these -- the city allows these four things to go on in the tourist resort district. The private roads, the gated community.
But that was after, you know, multimillion-dollar lawsuit with, you know, with a company that had built a 10-story high-rise condo and had a -- had, you know, the right to build nine more, and that was kind of a compromise, was to give them that so we wouldn't get nine high-rise condos. I mean, we did it, but we weren't happy about it. I mean, it was like, that was after two years of negotiations back and forth and preventing nine more 10-story buildings.
If I may, you also have the flexibility -- the subject's been broached by the developer. You also have the flexibility to recommend approval, subject to specific revisions, that would get you around having to address those waivers at the subdivision stage.
Steve, how's the paved road and changes to -- the private entrance part was a problem for city services as well, so I wouldn't want to approve that anyway. But how does pervious pavement versus pavement for city to take over operations, maintenance effect of drainage plan that would be part of the concern for flooding downstream?
Well, I think the only place that we were talking, and I could be wrong, was the main roadway through, because we were proposing brick pavers around the circle in the center. We'll just change that to pavement. You know, we won't have brick pavers.
Was it pervious pavement, though, that you were talking about?
No, we were recommending--
Nothing was pervious?
No. We had crushed aggregate for the alleyways in the back, which are private anyway. I mean, those are alleyways that you wouldn't do, but--
I misunderstood. I was thinking pervious pavement was part of a drainage scheme.
But be quite honest, if we had understood at the outset that you guys didn't want gates, you don't approve gates in this typical area, and you don't do private roads and you don't do brick pavers, the developer, quite honestly, would have had this on the plan tonight anyway. We had actually thought that we were just part of the uniqueness that we were going to run with with it, didn't understand it was something that you folks just didn't really were keen on. So--
The pavers might be all right, but to me, it's just the private roads and the lack of the connectivity that, you know, sets a precedent. I'm not worried about setting a precedent with pavers, because most people aren't going to want to go through that expense with the private roads.
I hate to speak for the Public Works folks about maintaining pavers.
Yeah, that'd be the issue.
I don't know.
I think that was part of the issue with doing, and then the city probably wouldn't be taking over maintenance of those, so we'd be right back to--
But now, there are stamp--
You might do stamped concrete right there.
Exactly.
There are stamps.
And that's what I've talked to the developer about, that if we don't get this with the brick pavers, when there are other options, we can certainly, when we go through the subdivision process, that we can offer as an alternative.
If you just lose one gate, yeah, lose one gate and stamp pavers, and you're good. I mean, stamped concrete, everything's cool.
One more thing. You need to get up to your 15 percent green space without the 16-foot alleyway.
Well, you know--
That's a deep subject there now.
The thing is, if we had -- and I talked to staff about this. If we didn't have an alleyway, we'd have a driveway on every lot, right?
Yeah, but that is not a green space.
But I could count it in my percentage toward my green space. And all I've done is linked those driveways up on the back, and I have a circular drive now. If I take away the alleyway and I put driveways in, you're going to allow me--
You're just getting kind of sneaky in your old age, aren't you?
I've been around the block a few times. Gee, well, I'm trying to make this unique thing work, and you're working against me here, so--
I tell you, I'm going to go to work with them, I think.
Any more questions?
Mike, you got any thoughts on that?
Any thoughts on the green space itself? They're right at the brink of where they need to be, and based on the way that the net density is calculated, not being able to count that driveway as buildable area is kind of what is throwing a kink in the plan. They're at 15.01 percent currently by the driveway, the driveways that are the crushed aggregate, as he had mentioned, being counted as a right-of-way. Because you have to calculate the green space density, you'd remove all the right-of-ways, public or private, which right now, they're not considering that alleyway as a right-of-way. And what Steve was mentioning was it being more of a driveway for each unit as a circular drive for the entire community as opposed to being an actual private right-of-way. When a guest comes in, they have their parking spaces that are around the center of the front of the houses to enter in through the front door, not to drive around to their back to where their carport is or where their covered garage or anything like that is. They're not more than likely, who knows where they're going to park? Can't say that, but it's designed for them to park out front when visiting the property, and only the residents to be using that 16-foot alley that is in the rear of all the lots.
So if we knock those other three waivers out, are you pretty comfortable with it?
If those other three waivers were gone, my recommendation would have been for approval.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Mike.
I'll make a recommendation for approval for zoning change 19.12, conditional to removal of the gate and paving the roads with a hard surface.
I have a motion with those two considerations.
A second.
I'm sorry. I can't.
Right.
Okay. Subject to pulling out those three waivers, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And you've got those three waivers, Emily, in the... Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion for recommendation to City Council passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SD 1931.
Commissioners, welcome back.
Glad you're back, Buford. I thought you were making Mike do all the work today.
Let's, let's, let's discuss a routine two-lot minor subdivision, Hoffren subdivision. And as you can see by your zoning map on the left and your aerial image on the right, this is bordering the west side of Troyer Booth Road, and they're requesting two lots. Requesting two lots, you see Lot 1, 7.22 acres, Lot 2, 1.22 acres. This is a single tax collie, Mr. and Mrs. Hoffren. Mr. Dewberry is here tonight, Mr. Steve Pumpfry is here tonight. This is zoned R3 PGH. The, the, we'll go through this. And Chairman, Commissioners, I want to thank Nancy Milford one more time. This was the last application that she prepared before she retired. Her last day was Thursday of last week, so we'll show some images of the property. We do have, we do have some, some conditions of approval for this. You'll notice that items 1 through 4 right there. Item 1 is a housekeeping item, which is a routine edit of the plat to correct drainage easement. The, the traffic study requirement. And on minor subdivisions, Commissioners, that is, again, a housekeeping issue. Generally, the engineer is able to provide us a letter stating that a traffic study is not needed if the trip generation doesn't trigger the requirement for a traffic study, which would be the case here. This would be something that we would need for, this would be something that we would need for file purposes. And thank Mr. Peterson for this catch. They would need to add a signature block for Baldwin County Health Department. And Richard, that was a septu tank issue, I believe, or...
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have sewer on the, on the big lot, really. I mean, we got a forest man on Morphe we prefer not to tie onto a grinder pump with because it's a pretty significant forest man anyway, so we just didn't have Health Department...
I'm sorry, Richard, thank you. That would allow, so that way, because as you can tell with, as you can tell with 7.22 acres and then the Lot 2 being 1.22 acres, possibly some future development on this property, so that way, if there was the need for, if there was a need for septic service, it could be at least contemplated. Some housekeeping items, Chairman, the, there's a waiver request for the tree survey because of the location of heritage trees. And we don't recommend approval of that waiver, but we do note to the applicant that as a way to satisfy that requirement, they certainly may wish to contact the city's horticulturist. And we may be able to accomplish that by making a note on the plat if there's any heritage trees. Another request regards the wetland survey, the installation of wetland buffer signage. We don't recommend approval of that waiver because it's basically the standard requirement for wetland buffer signage that we require on all subdivisions. Now, the green space, we do support that, recommend that approval, because you look at the lot sizes, the two lot sizes, the, the, the remaining lot size of the balance of the property is such a tremendous size that any future development activity would certainly go through that normal subdivision process and where the green space could be dealt with there. So I think that Lot 1 has sufficient green space when you look at Lot 2. And Commissioners, the sidewalk issue that we tackle every time we have a subdivision, especially a minor subdivision, I'm gonna defer to the, I'm gonna defer to the pleasure of the, of the planning commission on that. There are existing sidewalks on the west side of Troyer Booth Road. We don't currently have a sidewalk easement reflected on the plat for the Morphe side or the Nichols side, so the commission may wish to, may, may wish to add that via condition of approval. And I'm sorry, Commissioners, I'll back up right there. Any questions for staff before we turn it over to the engineer?
Can you go to that prior screen for just one second, please? Because I was thinking they had sidewalks there already.
They do on Bishop.
I'm sorry?
Bishop, right over there.
Or Booth?
Booth, right over there.
Booth. Alongside the west side of Booth, yeah, they are, they, they're there, sir. And so you, and you'll notice the existing home right there, and so you're, in, in the, in the view, especially on the right, you're actually looking at north, and you can see where the lanes diverge to go around that existing tree.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, does anybody like to make a presentation?
I guess this is the night of waivers for me. Mr. Hoffren's here also, and so I'm gonna speak on his behalf. Mr. Hoffren's not developer. He's not doing this to develop property for, put a roadway in, do apartments on. He's trying to divide his house out of the total piece, more for family reasons than anything else, just to get it divided now. You know, what he could do, he could just go ahead and put it in his will that he wants it divided this way, then when it's done, he's probate and it gets divided and, and nobody says anything about it because it gets done by probate. But he's wanting to do it this way. And, and I guess, doggone it, you can slap my hand on this one, I'm the one that's probably pushed it more than he has about all these extra things. I, I guess I find it ridiculous that I have to have an engineer write a letter that a traffic study's not needed when there's a house on one lot and nothing on the other, and it's, and no one knows that there's less than 50 trips per hour or less than 1,000 per day. I, I just don't find the need to write a letter for that. But if that's what we gotta have for housekeeping rules, then, then you'll have a letter. The wetlands, the buffer signs, again, we're not developing the property. You know, this property could sit here, if we did a wetland delineation, only good for five years. He's not looking at developing the property. We put signs on it, five, 10 years from now, finally, somebody starts to do something not even good then anyway. Trees, again, not developing the property. We can put a note on the plat that says in all of these cases that before any development of the property is done, they have to get a tree survey, they have to locate the wetlands. I would suspect if you even try to put a house on the second lot, the building department probably requires every bit of this to be done. So I don't know that you're giving up anything by granting this, other than if you tell me to do it, Mr. Hoffren's just going to have to pay for a wetland survey and some wetland signs, tree location, which I, I don't see at the end of the day where that has accomplished anything for the type of... It's unfortunate, and I guess I'll get on my soapbox, and it's unfortunate that we don't have some type of a family division where this is allowed without all the other things that you would obviously requiring for a development project, where they're gonna build roadways and... I understand all these other things. I've been in this business, I know why we do traffic study, I know why we do tree locations, wetlands. But in this particular case, it doesn't seem to fit that. And I just, I just, I guess it rubs me the wrong way that he's gonna have to have all that done when he's not proposing what a developer normally would do.
Because when you do, you're gonna see a proposal down a point clear to divide a lot into two, and then you're gonna see two proposals to divide those two lots into four, and I'll be the happiest person in the world. But, but no, I agree with some of it, you know. Well, let me ask you, isn't there a sidewalk? I thought the single tax corporation built the sidewalk along Morphe going to Troyer Booth, right there along the Hoffren's property already.
There's not, there's not a sidewalk in front of your house on Morphe?
It's just along the road you're built, you see the trees that I give a half an acre, six tenths of an acre so they can build that road.
I remember he did that, he, yeah.
That's kind of the other side of this that kind of rubs us the wrong way. He gave up a lot of right-of-way here for the city to do this nice fancy roadway there, and now all of a sudden, he wants to do something and...
I could have asked for this one to give the road, but I didn't get into that.
But I thought the sidewalk was there on Morphe.
There's sidewalk on Troyer, yeah.
It's east of...
Just on, on the booth.
East of Booth, running back toward, it's, the new sidewalk constructed by single tax, if I remember correctly, it's east of Booth and runs down to Thompson Hall Road, if I remember correctly.
I, I was thinking that this was in that part that went from, where we built it, from all the way from Guarino to Troyer Booth.
But not on the north side of this property or the south side.
Because I think that was something we were looking at. I think just, you know, on the sidewalk, I'm fine with just a right-of-way on this. You know, if we could get a right-of-way, then the single tax corporation would probably come back, because that was a single tax project to try to get all of Morphe, and a lot of people have been anti. And, and I tell you, Mr. Hoffren's always been very, very easy to work with, with everybody.
And Mr. Chairman, while, while, while Steve is still here, let me just say, I certainly respect the request and understand the respect, and understand the request. And to address something very, very briefly, we certainly are contemplating some type of family subdivision procedure of some kind. Now is a difficult time to try to amend the subdivision regulations, considering what we discussed earlier today, about four hours ago. So that is something staff is contemplating. But understand, these are standard requirements of the subdivision regulations that we get for one, for two lot miners, three lot miners, some of them far beyond city limits, some within the city limits. So we're certainly not trying to create a hardship for anyone, but, you know, it's our duty as staff to enforce the subdivision regulations.
Can you think on the traffic thing, where, I mean, on this one, obviously, it's not gonna be 50 cars an hour, unless my sons live there, in which case it might be 100.
Well, I think common sense comes into play anytime you're applying any provisions of the law.
Steve, you can't sign that letter.
I sent it, but they wouldn't take my word. Had to be an engineer.
What are you?
Planner.
Oh, no wonder.
Yeah.
Now I understand what all this, now I understand what all this ho, ho, hocus pocus is today.
I've lost respect now. I thought I was in good company right here.
Okay.
So you think, what about the wetlands? Would we be on, would we be on thin ice to not require the wetlands buffer signs?
Can I answer your question? Can I answer the question for you?
I'm a little hesitant.
There's no way you can draw a line, that's, that's the problem. And that's where everybody gets into, gets into, into ditch. You can't draw the line of where the next one comes and says, oh, but I don't want but this. And then you, I mean, once you've, once you've opened the box, or once the cow gets out the door, you don't get him back in the door. So I, and I understand it, and certainly, to me, unlike, and unfortunately, the county, the county did away with their, with their exempt subdivisions because of a certain attorney that said that they were illegal. And I think how many, over the years, that we've approved that were that way. But there's, there certainly should be some kind of, of a program where we don't require this kind of thing for this type of subdivision. But it's like we always talked about from the very get-go. You don't like the way the law is, change the law. Don't, don't make exceptions for one that you can't wait, make for everybody.
I kind of agree with that, maybe on the wetlands. I think on the traffic, you know, it's kind of silly. That's probably why we're not opening Pandora's box.
I agree. I mean, how much that cost? I give you $10, get it done, okay?
Yes, sir. You wanna, if you speak, you need to do it enough. Microphone, Mr. Hoffren, I'm sorry. Gotta have it on record.
I just want to say on this, if this gets divided like this, anything that's done to that lot's gonna have to go through all this approval anyway. I can't just go out there and do anything with it anyway. So, I mean, I ain't trying to change a thing. You know, I'm just, just getting, pulling my house out of the lot because my wife and I have both been married before, and, and her, her daughter is gonna be part of the house, and that's, that's the only reason we're doing this. I mean, I ain't planning on doing a thing with that property. I ain't saying I won't, but even if I do, it's gonna have to be...
It's gonna come back.
All this stuff is gonna have to be approved then, so why make it do it now? I mean, you know, is it, the rules will probably change by next year, you know, you keep changing these rules, so I'd, you know, it's hard for me to believe why we should require this stuff, that there ain't nothing to be done. You know, I mean, there isn't no plans at all to do this. So why, why, if, if somebody come in tomorrow and wanted to buy that, they're gonna have to get all this approval. You ain't gonna just say, well, build the stuff. So, I mean, I ain't asking anything to, I ain't, if I was planning on building something, I could see it, but I ain't planning on doing, I ain't saying that I won't eventually do something, but whoever does it, or we, it's gonna have to get approved to do all this stuff, you know? We, we understand that, but the problem that we've got is that, those are the rules by which we have to function. And, and if we did, if we, if we said, oh, Mr. Hoffren's a great guy, let's just don't make him do it, and when Billy Bob comes in here next month... Yeah, but he still, he would still, couldn't, he still couldn't do the same thing. He'd have to go through and get the same approval. He couldn't... Well, that's what we're saying, though. If we don't, if we don't like the way the law is, we need to change, we don't like the way the rules are, we need to change the rules. You ain't giving me approval to, to, to build a thing on there. You ain't giving me approval to do anything but just, just divide it in two lots. I mean, that's, so, I mean, if you're giving me approval to do something, I can see that, but, you know...
Well, the problem is, you can then build something on the other lot. And if we do that, somebody comes in and divides a 70-acre parcel into 235s, and then 235s into 217s, and the, you know, 417s, and the 28 and 1/2s, and the 28 and 1/2s to 4 and 1/2s, and those 28 and 1/2s for just doing the same thing we did for you.
Right. Well, but you still have to get it approved. I mean, you would have to, before, whatever, whatever somebody else come to do, that, when that property gets developed any further, it's gonna have to get approved to do it. I mean, it ain't, you know, I ain't asking to get approved to do anything but what it's doing there, so that's, you know, that's...
Chairman, I would like to say that the property next door was required. They split into two lots as well, and they were required to do all of...
All right, well...
But he built a house in a, in a building on the property. They did something with that property. I didn't do it, I didn't do it, so...
Have I opened the public hearing, Emily? I'm getting brain dead.
No, you never did.
All right, I'll go ahead and open, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? In that case, I will close the public hearing and turn the meeting back over to the Commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. In reference to case SD 19.31, Hoffren subdivision, I recommend approval, subject to staff recommendations.
I have a motion. What about this, just require, on the sidewalks, just require a right-of-way for the sidewalk?
Oh, the sidewalk, I'm, I'm, I'm not supportive of the waiver. Just a easement on the sidewalk.
I have a motion to approve subject staff recommendations with a sidewalk easement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to vote on each waiver, Ken?
Vote on what?
Specify them.
I think about a motion to say...
Deny.
According...
Without the waiver.
Yes.
Correct.
Without the waiver.
With the exception of the sidewalk.
That's right. As subject to staff recommendations.
That's the staff, right. With the, with the sidewalk easement, you won't have to pay the cost of the sidewalks.
So, so Commissioners, you're basically concurring with the staff recommendation of the disapproval of certain waivers and then the approval of the one green space waiver?
That's right.
Okay. And then adding the sidewalk easements along Morphe and Nichols.
That's right.
Okay, following our standard sidewalk easement procedure.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners.
Everybody clear? Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion approves unanimously. Informal review of Carrigan properties.
And Chairman, the, the developer requested that we pull that item.
Darn. All right, how about 1906?
President.
Yes, sir. Informal review of Matt Sankey for an amendment to East Park PUD. This property is located on north side of Parker Road, just east of Highway 98.
He lives.
We found an engineer.
Thank you for having me tonight. Have you got the slide? This, uh, property is located right off Parker Road, across the street from Publix. It's an existing PUD. I believe it was approved in 2005. The layout that you have before you is a preliminary layout that we just recently did in the last week. We met with staff a couple of times, they've been very generous with their time. Couple compare and contrast, the, the original PUD that was approved in 2005 had about 800 linear feet more roadway, and they had about four more lots. That was a 47 lots. We're proposing with this layout, 43 lots. You'll see a lot of green space. You'll see a lot of green space. We will, obviously, in amending this PUD, we're amending the layout, we'll meet the new green space requirements. The one thing that is not shown on this layout, because it just occurred, I think we met Thursday or Friday with the staff, is there, as you enter the property off of Parker, there's a lot, is a single-family residential home on it right now, just to the east of the entrance. And in the original PUD, that was included in the PUD with residential lots. The, the owner is considering putting that piece of property into this piece of property, but would make that a commercial lot in lieu of a residential lot. Again, this is preliminary, preliminary layout. It, it may change somewhat, but we're still going to probably keeping that. We're going to be at or less 47 lots when, when all said and done. One other unique feature of the property, there is a cell tower located on the property that we will break out from this PUD and provide an easement to access it. If you recall, this property was, prior to the 2005 rezoning, was about a 90-unit mobile home park. And a lot of the infrastructure is in. We will probably be able to utilize some of that infrastructure. Mr. Peterson has allowed it, if I understand correctly, a lift station on the property that is operated by the city, and would have capacity for this type of development.
Are all the trailers gone?
All the trailers are gone. Yes. The roads are still in, the infrastructure's in, but-
Are these the existing roads?
No, sir. Not at all. Now, and the roads that are in are, are more alleys.
They came, they came in off of Parker and went out by Eastern Shore Glass, didn't they?
And that, if you'll notice, the road in the middle of the, of the development, we have a road-
Yeah, yeah.
-going west, there is a dedicated easement that comes out into that commercial area.
Is it going to be utilized?
It will be open, yes. I would think that traffic, the only traffic you would see, in my opinion, at this early stage, would be traffic on the north side of the development that is turning to go north, say, in the morning. But that most, I think, will use the light at Parker, and then the entrance at, off of Parker. But I could, I could see traffic potentially coming out of that alleyway, that, well, it's not an alley, it's actually a road there, and entering 98 to go north. I don't think they'd get on 98 to try to turn south, there's no way to do that.
No, there's media in there.
What is to the north of this?
More-
Yes.
I was wondering if you could make a connect to, I'm just getting connectivity to the north. If you could connect to the north.
This, there is a, this, there's a piece of property between here and, and that church.
Right.
But one time the church came to us about this property, and they were looking-
They, in 2017, they were possibly going to amend this PUD to put the church on this property. They were going to move on to this, but to, to add to school. They, to the property to the north, trying to connect to it. It's really not feasible, it would be a sub-street that would, I don't want to say never, because we never say never, but it would be very hard, the property owners, a couple property owners would have to get together in order to make a development that could connect to this-
Right.
-for that.
Well, we appreciate the presentation. Any, any input that we can glean? Like I said, staff has been very generous with their time.
Just to interject-
I'm going to tell you what, it was, that, that, goodness gracious, that trailer park was, I don't know if you ever spent any time there when it was functional.
The density, the density for this PUD amendment is reducing what the density was of the previous PUD, which greatly reduced the density of the mobile home park that was there. There is less, less asphalt in this design than what was in the previous design. They're able to eliminate a lot of the asphalt, therefore, there's a lot more actual, you know, previous area for the water to go to. So that's always one thing we try to look at, if they can avoid it. Can, that's one thing that this did, it rearranged the green space. And we're talking to them, they know that they're in the subdivision process, that the new green space requirements would have to be met, not the standards that were in 2005, when it was originally submitted.
And this, the hatch green area is your green space?
Yes. And if you'll look, there's a, not out parcel, but a box out area that, if you're familiar with the property, it's got a lot of topography to it. It's probably got 25 feet of fall across that property. And the low point is down, and you see where that box out area is, and that green space. And there is a drainage easement, dedicated drainage easement out of there. That's the obvious location, logical location of where our detention area will be.
Any way to consolidate some of that green space?
We, actually, I was looking at another layout today that could possibly, we talked, and the staff recommended that too, that when we get in that process of cutting some of the corners on the lots that, and, and making walking trails to connect all of that.
Just, just something that would-
Right.
If you're going to have, how many, how many lots?
Between, less than 47. There was 47-
Okay, so you say 45 lots, and I mean, you're going to have, probably have a lot of kids and things in there, but just something to have of, a, a place where they can actively pound on each other.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Alright, older, new business, new business?
I got a new business. I would like to make a recommendation to the, to the planning commission in regard to a special meeting that we talked about earlier in tonight's, tonight's meeting, as it relates to the Greeno Road corridor. And what my recommendation would be to, or my motion would be to, the purpose being for public participation and discussion of the Greeno Road corridor, no, where there would be no formal action by the commission. It would be on September the 10th, 2019, from 5:00 PM till 6:30 PM, and it would be here in the council chambers. Formal notice would be given as required by the Open Meetings Act. And additionally, participation, the, it would be for, to foster participation, notice by first-class male to property owners within the corridor, although such notice is not required by law. But we would do that anyway. And I'd like to make that-
I've got that formal motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
If we're going to send out a formal notice, we're going to send it out based on the October meeting where we are going to make a decision about this. How come we just can't combine those into two, into the same notice and let them know we're having an informal meeting prior to the-
I don't think, Ken, Ken, we had that discussion earlier, and that's a-
I think the law would require those meetings to be noticed at seven.
Any more further? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion adjourned.